Good night at any public high school, but you can't find a parking spot. I would really invite you, when you leave, and we're not inviting you to leave, you know, check it out. All the way from the auditorium, all the way over here, all the way to the field house, there is something going on tonight. Really amazing, it just tells you, this must be made, right? Got a volleyball game wrapping up, volleyball on the field house, just so much going on, so many wonderful things that students are doing and that are happening tonight. My name is Bob McBride, I am the superintendent of Lockport Township High School District 205. So excited for you to be here, there's so many august people here tonight, from our colleagues, from Joliet Junior College, to so many of our colleagues who have spent a lifetime in public education that were here to acknowledge as retirees. We actually are going to open a school board meeting. So we have to have our board president Veronica Shaw, we'll open the meeting, and then I'll maybe see a little bit about what's next. So President Shaw.
Good evening. All right, I call this meeting to order at 7:05. Roll call.
Here, Tom. Here. Here. Johnson. Lopez-Libas. Here. Alleran. Here. Stray. Shaw.
Here.
Avery. Here. And yeah.
Here.
Okay, so for our pledge of allegiance, I'd like a guest, Dr. Namuwo, to lead us in our pledge.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll turn it back over to Dr. McBride.
All right, well we have Dr. Namuwo here, but first, one thing is, if we both had children, well, I should say, I used to have a child at Creighton University, no longer, graduated now, but we're going to bring him out in just a second. Tonight, you're going to notice that we have three performing groups that have all had state or national level achievements. And it feels awkward to have performing groups without performance. So I'm going to turn it over to my good colleagues over here. We're going to acknowledge Win Symphony, but isn't it better to hear Win Symphony? So I'd like to turn it over to Brian Covey, if you could lead us out, get us started, fire us up, let's hear it from Win Symphony, and then we'll have our colleagues from JJC. Director Brian Covey, directing Win Symphony. Congratulations, you just heard one of the state's best high school bands, so we give it up to them one more time, man. I don't have to say much, you guys did an amazing job, you sound fantastic. We have a whole list of resolutions, and we'd really appreciate if you'd stick with us through all of them, lots of people to honor. I want to start with our partners from Joliet Junior College, and I'm going to introduce just in a moment their president. Five years ago, we set out on an ambitious board goal, this Board of Education decided that college experiences and career experiences were the most important things that we could do for our children, that every student by 2025, and we're almost there, would walk out of Lockport Township High School regardless of what they do after they leave us, with college experiences and career experiences, both. And we were so lucky that when Dr. Clyde Namuwo became president of Joliet Junior College, he had a vision of something you might not know, called dual credit. And basically, dual credit is an opportunity to earn credit at Joliet Junior College by taking classes we offer right here at Lockport Township High School. One of our board members, Tammy Hayes, recently had been talked about how her daughter benefited from having a Joliet Junior College transcript as she went to Joliet Junior College. And we were just so lucky to have Dr. Namuwo as a partner. He's here to recognize our board, we're here to welcome him and recognize him for his visionary leadership of JJC, for being such a great partner to us. I'm going to let him introduce his team, introduce why he's here, but could you welcome him with a big round of applause, Dr. Clyde Namuwo, president of Joliet Junior College?
Thank you for that gracious introduction. Dr. McBride, I've appreciated your guidance, your mentorship, the many coffees we've had at Starbucks, as I've transitioned from the state of Arizona here to the state of Illinois, you've really helped me understand the entire education ecosystem here in Illinois, so I value your friendship and I appreciate you very much. As Dr. McBride shared, I'm Dr. Namuwo, proudly serve as the 10th president of Joliet Junior College, nation's very first community college, it is the honor of a lifetime to share that, to hold that position. As I look out at the crowd here, how many of you have had a meaningful experience at Joliet Junior College? Just to show hands. And that's the great, great, great thing, that I get to walk into a room with so many hands raised. I'm going to invite a few people up to join me here, we've got a proclamation to share with Dr. McBride and the Board of Education. The first person I'd like to bring up is the chair of our board, Chairman Jim Budzinski, will you join me, please? It's his signature on the proclamation, Dr. McBride, so I thought I'd put a face to the signature here. Next person I'd like to bring up is the executive vice president for Joliet Junior College, my right-hand person in administration, Dr. Yolanda Farmer. And we've got a leader over our dual credit office, senior director of academic support and excellence, Aaron Farmer, will you join me, please? And last, representing the JJC Foundation, and I'll explain the role each one of these individuals has played in the success of 12 by 12 by 12, Michael Murray from the JJC Foundation. So two years ago, we had a vision, as Dr. McBride shared, and the vision was to drastically increase dual credit participation across our entire region. Now JJC serves 26 high school districts, we cover seven counties, a population of over 800,000 residents, from Peatown to Yorkville, from Coal City, all the way up to LaMonte, in every single school district in between. And three years ago, when I started as JJC president, as Dr. McBride referenced, I saw a tremendous opportunity for JJC to be a better partner in the dual credit space, to serve as a resource to our high school districts. Within the first three months of taking the job, I crisscrossed our entire district, got in a car, and went from Peatown to Coal City, to Shorewood, and Plainfield, and LaMonte, in every single one of these 26 school districts with the vision. The vision was challenging all 40,000 high school students in our district to earn 12 college credits by the time they finish 12th grade and pay just $12 of credit. Over those three years, we've added 2,000 new students to the rolls at JJC. 2,000 new students are exponentially more likely to go to college and exponentially more likely to succeed once they get there. Thanks to the great support of our Board of Trustees and the leadership of Chairman Budzinski, the operational excellence that Dr. Yolanda Farmer provides, the operational excellence that Aaron provides as a leader over the dual credit space, if your sons or daughters decide to earn 12 credits through Lockport Township High School District, if they do that, the JJC Foundation has set aside a pool of resources, and if they enroll at JJC, the JJC Foundation will cut them a check for $500, just to enroll at JJC. I want to take a moment to thank Dr. McBride for his partnership, I want to take a moment I want to take a moment to thank the Board of Education for believing in us as an institution. I believe we have indeed been good partners to our high school district. But let me, let me explain why we're here, and I won't read all the whereas statements on this proclamation, but out of all the 26 districts in our entire region, Lockport Township High School District 205 was number one in our entire region. And that is what we're here to celebrate. Dr. McBride, a proclamation of appreciation to you and the Board of Education for supporting the dual credit initiative called 12 by 12 by 12, whereas Lockport Township High School District 205 has demonstrated an unwavering commitment dating back five years, probably longer, to academic excellence and expanding higher education opportunities for its students. Thank you so much for your partnership. Congratulations to all of you.
All of you, whatever happened to us? Thanks so much for being here. Yeah, come on up, board members. Yeah, we'll just, you know. It didn't happen if PR doesn't document it, right? Come on up, you guys are the people who really sent the word to us. I'm going to turn the mic over next to something really important, very special. Dr. John Greenin, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Personnel. Tonight, we have with us a number of individuals who've literally devoted their entire careers to public education. We want to acknowledge them, we want to have the Board acknowledge them, and Dr. Greenin is going to lead us in that. Dr. Greenin.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. One of the parts of my role as Assistant Superintendent of Personnel is I have the privilege of meeting with every new hire that we employ here at LTHS. There are a number of items that new hires go through in the Personnel Office, meeting my assistants, going through a number of different paperwork to sign. I meet with each employee to go over the contracts, go over policies, but before I do any of that, besides welcoming them to Lockport, the first thing that I show them before I get into my presentation is our mission statement. And our mission statement says, "We at Lockport Township High School District 205 will create a nurturing and challenging environment in which all students achieve success, develop personal responsibility, and become lifelong learners." And then it goes on to say that "we will partner with our students, parents, businesses, and community to provide a quality, comprehensive academic career and extracurricular experiences for our students." And I show them and go over that mission statement because I truly believe, no matter what group of employee you are from here at Lockport, everyone has a part in bringing that mission statement to life for our students. And I mention that this evening because tonight, we are going to recognize six of our retiring employees who absolutely have made that mission statement come to life for our students at Lockport Township High School. So the first retiree that I would like to introduce to come on up to the front, from the College and Career Applications Department, he's been in education for 36 years, 29 of them at Lockport, Mr. Jeff Brown. Jeff has taught a number of classes at Lockport, including Engineering Design 1 and 2, Architecture 1 and 2, 3D Design and Animation. He has been a Skills USA Advisor, Illinois Design Educators Association Advisor, and I must mention that this year, had a record five state champions at the IDEA State Competition at Illinois State University. Jeff was founder, sponsor, and mentor of our Robotics Club, sponsor for the Technology and Computer Clubs, and he was a soccer coach here at Lockport. Some highlights that he noted, witnessing all three of his children graduate from Lockport Township High School, having the special opportunity to teach his son in three different courses, working with great LTHS staff, especially the friendships and good times with the technology education guys, seeing many of his students successfully pursue careers as architects, engineers, and animators, the privilege of teaching and mentoring numerous students who achieved regional, state, and national championships. After retirement, Jeff plans to teach at Joliet Junior College. Moving up to his lake house in his home state of Wisconsin. And enjoying the lake life with his family. Speaking of his family, tonight Jeff is accompanied by his wife Susan, his daughter Allison, and his son Kyle. Lastly, I must say, anytime that I would reach out to Jeff in my role as Assistant Principal and Principal this year and congratulate him on the great success, some of which I read tonight, the first thing that he would always say is that he would just say, "It's all about the students." He would always just default to "it's all about the students," would never take credit, although he was such a tremendous leader as to why his students did have great success. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Jeff Brown. Up next, from the Science Department, 33 years in education, 32 alone at Lockport, Mr. Bob Chamblin. Okay, Mr. Bob Chamblin, he has taught the following subjects in the Science Department: Physics, Chemistry, Conceptual Physics, Computer Networking, Senior Science, AP Physics I and AP Physics C. Bob was our Science Club sponsor for 32 years. We'll have to check with Mr. Lester if that's a record. Mr. Chamblin also coached the following sports: he was a JV Boys Tennis Coach for five years, Varsity Girls Tennis for 15 years, and Varsity Boys Tennis for 20 years. Some highlights and memories that he wanted to cite, he worked with numerous tennis coaches for both the boys and the girls teams, and he wanted to specifically mention Jim Huey, Stacy Sparlin, Eric Pontau, Matt Grisulas, Scott Blinn, and Matt Major. Also some state tennis involvement, took some individual players and teams to the state tennis tournaments, and very fond memories of team meals before the state tournaments. Bob has enjoyed working with all students in AP Physics courses, he appreciates working with an excellent group of teachers in the Science Department. Plans after retirement, he's going to travel with his wife, who's here tonight, his wife Pam. He's also planning on visiting his children and their spouses out of state and working part-time teaching physics at Olivet Nazarene University. So don't let all the science accolades fool you, Mr. Bob Chamblin also is an avid basketball fan. There is not a time that I bump into Bob in the hallway where we don't immediately start talking about the Chicago Bulls. And unfortunately, he hasn't been very positive lately, but we'll always end up smiling and kind of laugh, and I will say, I've been in Bob's classes many times to visit, to make announcements, do some student recognition, and it's always just been such a great thing to see how his students connect with him and how he connects with his students. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Bob Chamblin. Up next, from the Math Department, 33 years in education, 21 at LTHS, Ms. Karen Cooper. Okay, some of the things that Ms. Cooper cited, besides being a math teacher, Title I tutor, she also notes some highlights and memories, taking the entire math team to champagne as a whole team qualified for safe. NCTM conferences where she always came back with something new to think about and had a chance to get to know her colleagues better in the downtime. The countless rewarding moments when a quote-unquote "light bulb" finally went off for the students, or students would come back to say hello or thank you. Hosting a 24-hour math modeling competition in the Media Center as well was another highlight. Some plans after retirement, she's going to do some hiking, exploring, traveling, and spending quality time with her wonderful family, many of whom are here this evening, her husband Jim, her daughters Kiara, and her mother Sandy. I also need to add, one thing that Karen left off is that she was our Union President for a number of years. Yes, absolutely. I had the privilege of working very closely with Karen in my roles as Assistant Principal and Principal, and really had the chance to see how great of a person, how dedicated she is, she's always about doing the right thing, and trying to make what's best for people, and I always appreciated that partnership that we had. Congratulations, Ms. Karen Cooper. Next up, our District Building Supervisor, Mr. Chip Schmidt. Chip was way in the back, I'm sure he's working. Your family's here, Chip, you can take five. So Chip Schmidt still has a few more months with us, but we are going to recognize him. He really cites the great people that he has met here at Lockport Township High School. He also mentions that he really is looking forward to traveling after retirement. He mentions his family, who is here tonight, his wife Sue, his son Ken, his daughter Alyssa, along with her husband Bill. One thing that I want to mention about Chip is he is a part of a great building and grounds team that we have here at Lockport Township High School. I can't tell you how many times people come up to me to compliment how great our facilities look. We are very blessed to have beautiful facilities, but we all know, you can buy the best-looking house, but if you don't take care of it, it's not going to look as good as it first did. And we are very blessed to have Chip as one of the leaders of the great building and grounds team that we have here at Lockport Township High School, and we are certainly going to miss you. Mr. Chip Schmidt. Next up, one of the great bus drivers that we have here at Lockport, 26 years at Lockport, Ms. Terry Sullivan. So as I mentioned, 26 years at Lockport as a bus driver here for Terry Sullivan. She notes some highlights and memories. One thing she noticed when she gets to see her students when they were freshmen, and then they're in their cap and gown, and when they're graduating, she says she feels like a proud parent, especially when that kid apologizes for being a jerk when they were a freshman. Or words, not mine. Terry said she used to bartend and would have former students come in and say, "That was my bus driver." Terry notes that her older children are LTHS alum, as was her late husband. She also attended Lockport her sophomore and junior year. Plans after retirement, she plans to travel to see family and spend more time with her grandkids. Speaking of family, her niece Amber and her great niece Sophia are here this evening. And I want to say, when I met with Terry a couple months ago for her retirement meeting, she was very happy, she was very excited. But Terry represents the great bus drivers that we do have here at Lockport. That, when I mentioned that mission statement and everyone being a part of that mission statement, I couldn't mean that anymore for our bus drivers and for Terry, because we've gone through some, some stuff the last few years. COVID, central campus, and our bus drivers were always there stepping up to ensure that we could do everything we could for our students. So Terry, thank you very much, congratulations, Ms. Terry Sullivan. Last but not least, from the Math Department, 34 years in education, 32 at Lockport, Ms. Mary Westburg. Okay. Mary Westburg mentions, besides being a math teacher, she was our head girl swim coach at one time, she was a boy swim coach, JV badminton coach as well. She cites for highlights and memories, favorite memories are all the friendships that she has made over the last 34 years. Plans after retirement, she plans to learn, learn how to wake up without an alarm, learn how to put herself and her family first, learn how to take vacations whenever she wants, learn how to slow down a little bit and enjoy life, and she is hoping that she will be a fast learner. Tonight, Mary is accompanied by her family, her husband Bob, her daughter Dana, and her daughter Anna as well. Just last week, in the Herald News, that newspaper did a feature for Teacher Appreciation Week, we actually had three teachers who had articles, two of which I already talked about this evening, Jeff Brown, Bob Chamblin, and Mary Westburg. And Mary mentioned in that article that one of her students, she bumped into a student after the student had graduated, and the student had, Mary had asked, you know, for his or her opinion on how Ms. Westburg was in the class, and that student said, "Firm but fair." And she's like, "I'll take firm but fair." I've gotten a chance to know Mary a little bit here recently, we attended a conference together, and I've seen how dedicated, the tenacity that she has about being a teacher. And again, just like everyone else here tonight, we're going to miss her very much. Ms. Mary Westburg. Lastly, we just have a number of retirees who could not make it this evening who I would like to acknowledge. Custodial foreman, David Kane. Assessment coordinator, Doris Fleckenstein. Bus driver, Robert Freibel. Bus driver, Guy Gal. District manager of buildings, William Howard. Custodian, Josephine Martinez. Bus driver, Victoria Morales. Director of transportation, Dave Niedesfall. Bus driver, Andrew Pappas. Director of facilities management, William Thompson. Custodian, Johnny Tomzak. And social studies teacher, Ron DeCio. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks so much for giving those educators just their moment in the sun. I am going to turn it over to Dr. Jacqueline Johnson for, we have adult recognition and we've got so many student recognitions. She's going to lead us into it. Could you please give a warm round of applause for Dr. Jacqueline Johnson, principal here at East Campus?
Good evening, everyone. This resolution is for Mr. Matt Mullins. Matt, are you here? Come on. Thank you. All right. So this is Mr. Matt Mullins, career and technical education teacher. Whereas Matt Mullins has earned the prestigious title of Skills USA Advisor of the Year, announced on April 24th, 2025 at the Skills USA Illinois Career Competition, and whereas Matt Mullins embodies on a daily basis an understanding that his success and accomplishment are part of a broader team effort in living out the slogans, "Best self, best work, and together we succeed." Now therefore be resolved on this 19th day of May 2025 by the Board of Education of La Porte Tontrop High School District 205, that Matt Mullins is hereby recognized for earning the prestigious title of Skills USA Illinois Advisor of the Year. Congratulations. Nice job. I'm going to also call up Ms. Janet Stock to help me recognize our National German Exam students. Whereas Anya Clausser, Owen Kachero, Caleb Landig, Kylie Nichols, and Kayden Tigas participated in the National German Exam in January 2025 and whereas the students received their medals at the Northern Illinois American Association of Teachers of German Ceremony on April 27, 2025. And whereas Caleb Landig was the school's nominee to compete for several travel scholarships for the 2025 summer, he is a winner of a two-week scholarship from the Swiss Benevolent Society valued at close to $3,000 to attend the Concordia Language Villages Waltz German Immersion Camp in Bemidji, Minnesota this summer. Caleb is a first LTHS winner of one of the German Study Trip Awards, and whereas Anya Clausser, Owen Kachero, Caleb Landig, Kylie Nichols, and Kayden Tigas have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of La Porte Tontrop High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 19th day of May 2025. Congratulations. All right, I'm going to now call up here Ms. Annie, our department chair for Word Language at E.L.
Good evening. Thank you to our La Porte Township Board of Education and Administration for giving us this opportunity to recognize our students who have earned the Illinois Seal of Bilingual Cee and Commendation Toward Bilingual Cee. The Seal of Bilingual Cee is an award given by the state to high school seniors who demonstrate proficiency in English and one or more other languages. In order to achieve the Illinois Seal of Bilingual Cee or Commendation Toward Bilingual Cee, students must attain a high level of proficiency in English, such as a 480 on the English writing of the SAT exam, and an intermediate, high, or advanced score in the areas of speaking, listening, reading, and writing in another language on an AP World Language exam or a test such as the stamp test that several of our students took this year or last year. This award is notated on their high school transcript and certifies their bilingual Cee for employers and universities. In addition, each student will be receiving a gold or silver seal sticker, which ideally should be placed on their high school diploma. The seal serves as a statement of accomplishment that helps to signal evidence of a student's readiness for career in college and to engage as a global citizen. Tonight, we are honoring 107 students who have earned the Seal of Bilingual Cee or Commendation Toward Bilingual Cee in the languages of American Sign Language, French, German, Japanese, Lithuanian, Polish, and Spanish. I will now ask Dr. Johnson to recognize our students who have earned the Illinois State Seal of Bilingual Cee.
Thank you. I'm going to read the resolution first. Whereas the above students have earned their Seal of Bilingual Cee on May 1st, 2025, and therefore have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, schools, and communities. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of La Porte Township High School District 205, Will County, that the following students are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievement. Vivian Alanas, Japanese, congratulations. Julisa Alfaro, Spanish. Amanda Bacanante, Spanish. Natalie Bruszek, Polish. Azul Dovado, Sicilian, Spanish. Grace Dushak, Spanish. Eric Geraldo, Spanish. Sarai Gomez Martinez, Spanish. Suzali Gonzalez, Spanish. Abigail House, Spanish. Julia Kesmerczuk, Polish. Noah Kepo, Spanish. Elijah Kerden, Japanese. Cheyenne Klimowitz, Spanish. Filip Kozakowicz, Polish. Natalie Crumtik, Spanish. Ashley Lopez Medina, Spanish. Jacenia Martinez, Spanish. Grady Moreno, Spanish. Victoria Moro, Polish. Patricia Niemec, Polish. Sophia Niemec, French and Polish. Michael Peja, Polish. Julia Parsinai, Polish. Olivia Potrowski, Polish. Wazera Shikoni, French. Nicholas Sudi, Polish. Gabriela Torres, Spanish. Cassandra Unzetta, Spanish. Emily Rona, Polish. That this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, La Porte Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, this 19th day of May 2025.
We will now recognize students who have earned Commendation Toward Bilingual Cee.
Whereas the following resolution, whereas the following students have earned their Commendation Toward Bilingual Cee on May 1st, 2025, and thereby have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, and communities, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of La Porte Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievement. Alexis Albright, American Sign Language. Natalie Ruor Tenoco, German. William Lorca Reyes, Spanish. Rafael Diaz Roserga, Spanish and Japanese. Josh Kane, Spanish. Owen Kachero, German. Alexandria McGrath, French. Estefany Molina, Spanish. Evelyn Lorak, Spanish. Diana Montal, Spanish. Logan Musco, Spanish. Emily Oday, Spanish. Annette Parker Ross, French. Nora Paloso, Spanish. Raven Rogers, Japanese. Maggie Runkie, Spanish. Ashley Scales, Spanish. Ella Slevinskis, Spanish. Eric Slevinskis, Spanish. Anthony To, Spanish. Gabriela Torres, Japanese. Alain Prucy, Spanish. Mia Montanada, Spanish. That this resolution was passed by the Board of Education of La Porte Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, this 19th day of May 2025. Congratulations, students. All right, next up, I'm going to say the resolution and recognition for the accomplishments of our La Porte Township High School Vocal Point students. All right. Whereas La Porte Township High School Vocal Point Group placed first at the ICHSA Quarterfinals and Sophia Melody won Outstanding Solist at the ICHSA Quarterfinals. And the entire group placed fourth at the ICHSA Finals and Gabby Costello won Outstanding Solist at ICHSA Finals. And whereas the entire group placed first in ICHS Great Lakes Semifinals and Lila Gonzalez won Outstanding Solist at the ICHSA Great Lakes Semifinals. And whereas Gabby Costello, Samantha Doproszansky, Cheyenne Klimowitz, and Elizabeth Torbick won Outstanding Choreography at the ICHSA Great Lakes Semifinals. Now you ladies can come on, so we can announce you. Gabby Costello. Megan Dillon. Catherine Di Belibo. Sabrina Dobronsky. Kayden Tippin. Lila Gonzalez. Carly Hudson. Cheyenne Klimowitz. Adra Le. Erin Linder. Sophia Melody. Juliana Oladero. Katrina Riddens. Caitlin Runya. And Elizabeth Torbick. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of La Porte Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 19th day of May 2025. Congratulations Vocal Point. So awesome. All right, now I'm going to say the resolution recognizing the accomplishments of the La Port Township High School Off the Record students. All right. Whereas La Porte Township High School High Off the Record Students placed first at the ICHSA Great Lakes Quarterfinals on March 22nd, 2025. They placed second in the ICHSA Great Lakes Semifinals and on April 4th, 2025, Off the Record Students finished third place and the National Wildcard placed them as the 10th Best Ensemble in the Nation. And whereas Jack Selly was also selected as Outstanding Vocal Percussionist at the Great Lakes Semifinals. Whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, schools, and communities by achieving their respective status. Come on, Off the Record. Brody Martals. Avenda Gigilio. Benjamin Forbes. Gianna Garbelini. Jacob Havas. Duncan Kenny Benson. Tara Bastorkas. Isabella McCormick. Linnea McGrath. Sorin Moran. Adeline Norman. Deborah Richford. Jack Selly. Katie Horstiski. Olivia Sweeney. Lea Freeney. And Katherine Whitman. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of La Porte Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 19th day of May 2025. Congratulations Off the Record.
Yeah, amazing. Both of those groups just at a, you know, just a national, national. I'm going to introduce my colleague, our director of student activities, Mr. Ryan Lester. He's going to introduce a number of groups that we will wrap up with tonight. Mr. Lester.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and read the resolution and then the names. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of the LTHS Winter Guard Team. Whereas the La Porte Township High School District 205 Winter Guard Team competed at the Midwest Color Guard Circuit Class SO Championship and the Winter Guard International Scholastic Open Class World Finals. And whereas the team claimed the title of Midwest Color Guard Championships on March 29th, 2025 at Victor J. Andrew High School in Illinois, and the Winter Guard International World Championships on April 5th, 2025 at the University of Dayton Arena, Dayton, Ohio. Whereas Director John Collier has aided and guided the team in these accomplishments. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of La Porte Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, hereby recognizing these students for this outstanding achievement to their dedication to their families, school, and communities. Come on down. Sarah Eaton. Abigail Perez. Lori Jobb. Madison Kaijak. Evelyn Krubas. Mara Krubas. Haley Luthy. Julio Meyer. Emma Poppeldass. Jen C. Ramirez. Kaffia Reed. Lorelei Sergey. Ella Slevinskis. Vinnie Pacala. Maya Benner. Katie Washington. Adriana West. That this resolution was passed by the La Porte Township High School District 205 Board of Education, La Porte, Illinois, on this 19th day of May 2025. Congratulations. And finally, I'd like to invite members of the LTHS Wind Symphony to come on down as the proper ensemble. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of the LTHS Wind Symphony. Whereas the following students have earned the title of 2025 Class 3A Honor Band at the University of Illinois Superstate Festival Competition on May 10th, 2025, 2025, at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. And therefore have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, school, and communities. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that these students are hereby recognized for this outstanding achievement. Congratulations.
Hey, thanks, Wind Symphony. You guys are awesome. You can go ahead and sit down. We have one last thing we have to do. The board actually has to vote, if you can imagine, to accept all these resolutions. So it's, as these guys, you should clap them out. That's one of the best bands in the state. Our board president will have the board going to accept all of these resolutions.
Okay, before the board votes on this, we do have one additional recognition this evening. Sorry, Dr. McGrath, we didn't tell you about this one. I would like to introduce Barb Mamon, the Regional Director of Seven Mindsets, to the podium.
Hello, hello. Um, I'm kind of nervous, you guys, because nobody here really knows why I'm here, right? I got on a plane this morning to come from Atlanta, Georgia, because I have a very, very special award that I want to present to somebody. Special recognition for lots of hard work that is put into growing the best students. So with Seven Mindsets, we are a mindset-based company that's dedicated to creating school cultures and environments where educators feel empowered going to school, love their job, feel passionate about the work, where students have the skill sets and mindsets and an ability to do more than they ever thought was possible. And we have multi-tiered systems of supports. Change Your Mindset, Change Your Life. How many of you believe that?
Absolutely.
So one of the things I thought of is that, you know, I travel all over the place to leadership conferences and, oh, with these hardworking people pouring into their schools, trying to do these amazing jobs. And I thought, you know, at the top, it's often difficult to, you don't have anybody to go to, trying to please board members and parents and students and other administrators. And it's a lot, it's a lot. And, you know, there are, there are some that just pop to the top. And I, we put out a contest for the Illinois Transformative Superintendent of the Year. And with that, we invited every school district in the state of Illinois to submit nominations on behalf of leaders that embody these powers of the mindsets. Things like, everything is possible, we are connected, passion first, live to give, attitude of gratitude, the time is now, on and on and on. I bet you caught it on my little secret, didn't you? I'm just going to say, it is, I have all these notes prepared, I have all this in my phone and everything, but I'm just going to speak off the cuff now. But it was just my honor and my privilege, and I'm going to talk somewhere and then I'll over to, to share that your superintendent, Dr. Bob McBride Jr., has been, has received an honorable mention for this prestigious award out of all of the school districts in the state. And one of the things, you know, everything came clear, I was getting goosebumps on the plane on the way over here, just reading through all these amazing things that were said about you, how you lead with integrity, deep impact, purpose-driven impact, you take a people's-first approach to everything. You really have a growth mindset in thinking about what's possible for yourself, for your staff, for your students, encouraging them to dream big and to push the boundaries. You know, also through we are connected, all of these, these things about well-being of staff and students, focus on mental health, belonging, making sure that everybody feels valued, the leaders, the bus drivers, the families, and just building that trust throughout the community. There's more. I mean, I might be here until 11 o'clock if I read it all. But, you know, taking action. Another thing that I just, just was so interested to hear about, how you incorporate student voice into so much of what you do. So, you know, even through the interview process, when hiring principals, students are involved and helping. That's, that's unbelievable. When you think about also letting them participate on the board, what? Y'all, that's amazing and so critical because it's something unique and different that not many school districts are embracing. And so finally, you know, the way that you show gratitude by celebrating your staff, celebrating the wins, just my honor and privilege to present this award. I've got a trophy, a certificate, and a ticket to our Mindsets University Virtual Event. Boy, let me do this. Congratulations. And we kept a surprise.
Thank you.
Okay, so thanks, everyone in attendance this evening. Recognizations like this remind us why it's best to be a porter. It's always so inspiring to take a step back and see all the amazing things that are happening in our building. To everyone we celebrated this evening, congratulations and thank you for your hard work and dedication. It really shows what happens in the walls of this building every single day. To our retirees, even those who had me as a student, sorry, Coach Wesberg. Thank you, your hard work, talent, and dedication don't go unnoticed. You make Lockport a place where great things happen every single day. And I have to vote on this, so, order, you guys ready? Do I have a motion to accept the resolutions as presented?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call.
Alana, yes. Will McEvegas, yes. Kayla, yes. Rosepetti, yes. Josh.
Yes. We will take a short recess, about five minutes, to go back to the porter room for board salutes. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.
Oh, wait. Do we have everybody here? Yes. Okay, perfect. So I guess I will start. First, I want to say thank you to the ladies that posted, oh, ladies and gentlemen, that posted the artisan market. I definitely spent all of my money there.
Right?
About a week ago. It was just a wonderful opportunity to bring over my special ed director. She got to see the wonderful things that are happening here, as well as one of our job coaches. And then the coaches in the grounds department, our grounds department, again, we heard tonight, is second to none. I went to a softball and baseball game last week, and the grounds were perfect and the game was fun. So thank you to everyone there. And I know I've seen a bunch of other people at different things, so I don't want to steal everybody's thunder.
I'll go ahead and go. I just want to say thank you to Dr. McBride and for Stephanie Croy for offering the board the opportunity to attend IASBO, the three-day conference in Schaumburg. I really enjoyed the opportunity, and I learned a lot, and I have even more greater appreciation for Stephanie's role. So, thank you very much. Got to spend some time with Tammy as we carpooled on day two, so that was all good. Learned a lot, and as Dr. McBride's phone probably recognizes that I talked to some vendors and shoot them our way. But learned, it was just a really interesting experience, and I really enjoyed it. Also, the teacher appreciation lunches on May 7th at both East and Central. It was really nice to see what the district does to recognize and appreciate the teachers and all that they do throughout the year. And so I hope they all enjoy their summer breaks. Just a personal shout-out to SEED. I want to thank Stephanie Croy, Robert Beach, and Jennifer Webb-Rea. I got to participate in the SEED session this year, and when I first saw the list of ten, was it ten, Stephanie? Dates, it seemed really long, but when we came to the last one, it just seemed too short. So I enjoyed getting to meet the fellow teachers and met some really fun, interesting, great teachers on a personal level, as in addition to working through some really difficult and emotional subjects. So thank you very much. Also, the student art showcase I walked through, that was phenomenal, just the amount of talent that we've got and the skills that the art teachers are able to bring out in students, I think is really great. I believe their art is still being showcased out in the theater area, so if you get the chance, please walk through. The CC Artisan Market, that was a blast. Again, I spent too much money. My car smells lovely. Things that you can go in and put in your car, and I had a great personal shopper, and so he was very helpful and helped me fill my bag. And then the Horticultural Plant Sale, popped over there too and bought some plants, and again, had a personal shopper there too. So they're dangerous, is all I can say with personal shoppers. Then participated on the faculty or the Facility Master Committee on the 12th, and so it was really good to see all the work, the contribution, the work the group has done. And I thought DLA did a really nice presentation, and I look forward to hearing what they bring back after meeting with the various groups within the schools. And then the awards ceremony, I was there as a parent, but was very happy to be there as a board member too. And congratulations to Avery and Mia for being some recipients of those scholarships. So congratulations. Dr. Veronica and Anne for participating and having scholarships to offer up, I think was really nice. So I just, and then Angela Huntington, Dr. Johnson, and Jeanette Castillo and all the guidance folks who really made it known over and over again that these scholarships are available to students, to encourage students to participate. And the growth in the number of applications for all those scholarships just goes to the credit of the staff and also the community that actually cares so much about all of our students. So, thank you very much.
And just in addition to that, Angela Adolf, all of your countless hours of work that you put into that. Grace Gonzalez, I saw her here somewhere. I don't know if she's still around. And just the foundation, because the work that they do, it's just amazing. And they, all they do is care about kids and give back to the students, so.
My board salute goes to all the teachers during teacher appreciation. We really have some outstanding, you know, teachers here in our district, and just, you know, for the amount of years of hearing the retirees, of the amount of years that they've taught here. You know, it's amazing that they've stayed so long here, but that just goes to show, you know, that it's a great school. And I'm glad that, you know, sometimes our alumnis that are here, you know, that teach here too. So, thank you. Thank you to the teachers.
Okay, I'll go next. I would say that I would have to second the plant sale. Again, private helper to help me spend my money, fuel my addiction. I really enjoy Ms. Martin. I really enjoy the horticulture. As some people know, some people do not, two of my daughters are in horticulture, got their degrees in horticulture, and that's, it's a big part of our family. So it's so nice to see that and to be able to support them. So we appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the opportunities that have been given to me to expand my horizons, learning different things about the boards. I enjoyed the conference with Candace. I was only able to go for one day, but, you know, I always learn something, no matter where I'm going. I try to take something with me that I feel that I'll be able to use in the future. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
And I wanted to give a shout-out to the Drama Club and the Porter Players. My husband and son and I were able to go see the Addams Family. It was a fantastic play, a very talented group of kids. It's always a joy. Some of my former students are up on stage, so that's really fun to watch as well. So shout-out to them. It was fantastic. Also, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Strike Out for Cancer over the past weekend. This is the second or third time I've been able to attend it. It's always so well put together. It is just so well attended. It brings the kids and the communities and the coaches and everyone together, and it's for such a great cause. So I wanted to say it was just, was wonderful to be out there with everybody. Thank you.
I have a couple of board salutes. I would first like to salute the LTHS Foundation. I was an attendee of the Senior Awards Ceremony last week, and truly just coming out of the event, I was so taken aback by the generosity of the community. I think it's just such a testament to what having a great school does to your community and how it brings everyone together and roots them. It was so wonderful to see the amount of alumni that were giving back and just people that have had experiences with students and wanted to nurture the next generation. Truly, my heart was so blessed to be a part of that next generation that our alumni and our community are nurturing. And then I would also like to give a salute to our AP coordinators, Ms. Featherling, Mr. Oster, Mrs. Castor, and Mrs. Murphy, only to name a few. We just got done with the very two heavy weeks of AP testing, and it's a lot of just working together and finding facilities to hold these tests in and organizing post. Every classroom had a poster with all of the information for the students. It's very detail-oriented. A lot of organization went into it. And as a student in that experience, I never felt lost. I never felt like I didn't know what I was doing, and that's because of the work of our whole AP team. So I was very grateful for that. And then I would like to second the CC2 event. I was able to attend that on Saturday. Just truly such an amazing event that the whole time I just felt such love, and I think that's such a testament as well to the Christian family behind the foundation and the event, and just our community overall, the things that can bring us together truly are so wonderful.
I wanted to salute all of you, all of you board members. I feel as though you guys went through this crazy election process and you got on this board, and that just takes a lot out of someone just to go and put themselves out there to stand up for their community, and it's just wonderful to see. And then it was super interesting to learn about all the processes that have to happen to replace board members. So overall, that was wonderful. Once again, the foundation did a wonderful job on that night, and the generosity and everything was just, it was amazing to see so many of my fellow students get so many awards, and just, it was a heartwarming evening. So, thank you.
All right, now we have the swearing-in of our elected board member, Ms. Luann Johnson. You there, Luann?
I'm here.
Okay, do we want to read this together, or do we want to go piece by piece?
It's up to you.
You're the president.
All right, then let's read it together. How does that sound?
Okay.
All right, whenever you're ready.
Okay. I, Luann Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
Yeah, the duties of the office of member of the Board of Elections, Board of Education of Lockport Township High School. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Practitioner of the school.
District's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression. Expression of opinion by my fellow.
Fellow board members.
And others.
To seek a hearing before the board.
Before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority. No legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote. Vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining. While retaining the rights.
To seek changes.
Changes in such decisions through ethical. Through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, our Board of School Directors, as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role. Role in the ethical and quality. And quality education of every student in the school. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community.
Formulate goals.
Formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School. Lockport Township High School. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment. And an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum. Their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment. A continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions. And all conditions affecting the education of our children. Of our children in accordance with state law.
State law.
I shall serve as elections key advocate on behalf of students and our community's school, our school, to advance the vision for Lockport Township High School.
And.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district for fulfilling the vision the board has created.
Fostering excellence for every student.
Every student in the areas of academic skills. Skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Okay.
All right, yeah, you're sworn in. And just as a little, you know, little school code, you know, Mrs. Johnson, you know, school board members can join remotely if they're on business travel, have family childcare, or are experiencing illness. And Mrs. Johnson, until you take the oath of office as a newly elected, speaking to this, Avery, you actually are not seated, and you have to take that oath of office in order to be a properly seated board member, participate in the board meeting. You know, that's how serious state school code takes the oath. So, thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay. Student board member reports.
All right, so it's the end of the school year. Our students are starting to enter that summer haze, and it's the final push-up classes and finals. And so Avery and I really just wanted to take this time because it is our last board meeting as the official student board members before next meeting, the new board members are introduced. To kind of recap all the work that the Advisory Council has done over this past year, just really as a testament to the students in the council, but also just as a note of gratitude to the board's initiative to include student voice, and Dr. McBride for giving up his Wednesday mornings to run that group. And so first off, many of our students participated in hiring panels to hire a variety of different staff positions this year, and Dr. McBride often says, "Students are the ones that are working with those people, so why not put them on the panels?" And it's just such a testament to the importance of student voice, and also amazing career experiences. We're learning what looks good in an interview, what doesn't look good in an interview, how to be a great interviewee. And then also, our student advisory council advocated to have the Eid holiday off in our next calendar, as well as the Thanksgiving, the whole week of Thanksgiving off. And those were things that were fruitful in our calendar for the next two school years, great impact on the calendar. Then we also helped Mrs. Castillo in creating the first ever social media policy for our district's social media platforms, which I'm excited to see the productivity in them, in our digital space. We analyzed cellphone usage in school in accordance with the new house bills that are being presented. This is something that is an ongoing initiative for next year for the Superintendent Advisory Council. We kind of just tipped into the iceberg this year, and I'm excited for the new council to continue that endeavor. And then we also brainstormed new ideas for bell schedule, which, similar to cellphones, is an ongoing endeavor, but it was one that Avery and I were very grateful to be able to just start to explore and lay the foundation for the next council. And then we also advocated for the Will County internship opportunities, which is something that many, many Lockport students are participating in this summer. And then encouraged communication between guidance and students, which is something that every year, the guidance department is working on, our Superintendent Advisory Council is working on. And then, as I already mentioned, for the future, we're focusing on the bell schedule and cellphone usage in the school.
So this past week, I got the opportunity to present to ISBE, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So we started off with the Student Advisory Summit. That was back in March. Leema and I went to that. So I'm just going to talk you through the journey of how we took it to presentation, to ISBE. So I got onto the Student Advisory Council via Skills USA, because as Skills USA president, I got nominated to be on the CTSO Board, Career and Technical Student Organization Board, and they conjoined with the Student Advisory Council, so I ended up on there. And it was a really great experience just going through, seeing what every school had to say across the area. And then we took everything that was said. I specifically presented on student engagement. So we took everything that people wrote down on little note sheets after each discussion, and they photocopied all of them, and we went through them, and we found like quotes that were good and stuff like that in order to put it on a slideshow. And we presented on student engagement. There were three other groups. It was mental health, resources, and curriculum. It was a really cool experience. I thought I would just be sitting on like the side, like how we have this setup here, but we actually ended up sitting in between the state board members. So I was like, whoa, I don't know how I got here. But it was just really amazing. I presented on legislation and ISBE policy, and our recommendation was to add a non-instructional day where you can connect with students, because connection is what really gets engagement going. So it was really just really cool to have an impact at that level. And then on top of that, ISBE has an art contest, and they wanted us to bring it back. There was only like 12 contestants at the high school level. So for next year, I would recommend for any people involved in art to join that, because there were only 12 high schoolers, and it's a wonderful opportunity.
And then lastly, for our board report, Avery and I wanted to touch on the agenda item regarding DJ entertainment at our dances. We really felt this was something that was important, because you can do the data and the spreadsheets and the numbers, but there are stories behind those numbers, and that is why Avery and I are here on this board, is to be a representation of student stories and the student experience. And what Avery and I really want to emphasize is just how magical the quality of DJ entertainment impacts our dances and our dance experience. I would say I have attended high school dances that are not Lockport at other schools, and they had to have a requirement of you are only allowed to leave at 8:30. You can begin starting leaving at 8:30. They had to say you had to stay for this amount of time, because they did not do the whole DJ situation with a stage and lights and an emcee, and people were incredibly bored. And we were lining up at the door, ready to go at 8:30. And I would say that in itself is a danger to the school in that your students are leaving earlier. They're not under your supervision. You're not sure where they are going. And then I would also just like to say, as a high school student, times are changing, and I have gone to every one of my Lockport dances with my friends. Students do not go in the typical fashion with dates as they used to. They're not there to be with a person. They're there for an experience. And so I think as a board of education, to be the best stewards that we can be to our students, it's important to know what students are looking for. And so if they're looking for that experience of dancing and having a great time, singing along to songs, then hiring a company that can best support that kind of experience and deliver that kind of experience is the best thing that we can do to be stewards to our students and have them leaving Lockport with amazing memories and not thinking, ah, could we have done that different? Is there a different way that maybe this could have been better? But instead it was, gosh, that homecoming dance. I just felt like on top of the world. And I know I made a core memory that in 20 years, I'll look back and just have a fond smile on my face looking at.
I couldn't agree more. I think I've never not been impressed by Lockport Dance. I think we do a really wonderful job every single year. Like, just the energy, just everything going on at the time, even the weeks leading up to it. But the final product of that week leading up, you know, you have so much, what's the word?
Energy?
Anticipation, yes. You have so much anticipation for like what this dance is going to look like, especially like freshman year or really any year. But as you go, you have so much anticipation, and then the final product is this huge dance with so much lights and everything. So it's just wonderful to see everyone get up and dance and just enjoy their time at our school dances, because we've seen it at other places, and it doesn't compare. It really doesn't. So we do have wonderful dances here, and we do very much support the DJ.
Do you guys have any questions for us about anything in our report?
I have a quick question. Oh, sorry. I have a quick question. So when you guys talk about the dances, I'm just curious. I have heard from other students that they wish that there were some slow dances, so, because when you do go at the date, they wish that there were some slow dances, and there doesn't typically be any. Is that, do you find that to be true, that there is not, it's not a slow dance ever?
So I would say typically there are about one to two slow songs at each dance.
From four hours, four hours to two for four?
But I would say that is just a reflection of the demographic of students that are attending our dances in the sense that most are not there with a date. And I will say that when a slow song plays, usually that dance floor kind of clears out. It means it's time for a water break. It doesn't mean we're staying on the dance floor for that slow dance. It's not something that attending a dance, I have ever thought that there. Um, it's not something that attending a dance, I have ever thought that there, I wish that there were more slow dances. I will say Boom does a very good job in um, providing a variety of music. It's not one kind of music throughout the whole night. There's, they do different genres, very much a reflection of what is popular among kids our age at that time of the year. And then I will also say, before the dance, Boom allows us to submit songs um, that we would like to hear. So that is an opportunity for students if they wanted to hear more slow songs. And I will say personally, I have submitted songs and heard those songs. So it is something that is productive and Boom does listen to our suggestions.
Thanks. Yeah, I would say, um, I will say that the slow dances are usually remixed. So they kind of sound funny when like, so it, it kind of ruins the slow dance, but.
Okay. Truth, it's truth.
Yeah. Um, other than that, I feel like they do a pretty good job at like looking at um, what's popular among the students now. Um, I personally think I've grown out of the music that they select. Like, they kind of target the freshmen. But I think that's valid because the most like, I feel as though freshman year, you go to as many dances as possible and then slowly that number dwindles.
For sure.
So they focus on the freshmen. So honestly, I think they do a pretty good job at finding the music you need.
And I think ultimately it's important to note too, that it's not just about Boom as it is so much the entire, the concept of a DJ system with an MC and lights and a stage and it's the experience of it all of not just like everyone's together. You feel, you feel that community. You're dancing with people. I see someone in the hallway on Monday and I'm like, oh my gosh, I was dancing with you Saturday night at the dance. It's about being together and creating the stage, how they lead um, us students in the dances. It's, I would say it's more so not just about Boom itself as it is the concept of a company like Boom um, leading our dances.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank both of you for your time on the board. I know you said that this was your last full meeting, so it's been a pleasure getting to know both of you throughout this time.
Well, we'll have them back in June. You know, we do a little changing the guard kind of, you know. Well, they're not, they're not, they're going back on.
One more.
June sixteenth.
Uh, F T report.
I just came out today that um, resolutions, call for resolutions. So if anybody wants to do a reg- resolution, we got to June the twenty fifth. And for the new board members, that's how we as individual school board express our concerns and and um, the things that we want to um, submit to the state. Okay? Again, also coming up uh, is the um, ISAB Governing Board Meeting. That's the one where you can sit in and understand how uh, programs are scheduled for the, uh, we're in the Three Rivers region, for Three Rivers region. And um, and then they also have an election of officers. So, um, what I want to do is, it's a late salute, but I want to salute the uh, student board members for representing us and bringing us back the feedback from the student body. I know you do well in your future endeavors. That's the ISAB report.
Thanks, Luanne. All right, Ms. Kishline.
All right. Um, just wanted to say thank you to administration and to the board um, for all of the teacher appreciation, thoughtful gifts that happened um, throughout the week and the notes that were in our mailboxes. Um, so just thank you. We felt the love. And it always, you know, someone had to be doing that behind the scenes work. So thank you again. Um, after tonight's um, start to the meeting, I don't really know what more I can say, but as Dr. Greenan um, talked about our mission statement, I would have to say mission completed tonight. Um, so it really shows, you know, the hard work that happens here on a daily basis. Um, to our coaches who are about to start regional play, uh, good luck in those endeavors. And then um, to our student boards, good luck. Um, I know you're going to go and do great things. Um, you really have, you know, been a great voice for the students, so thank you. And to our new board members, welcome. I'm looking forward to working with you um, and as, you know, the union. So thank you very much and have a great summer. I will not be here in June.
Mrs. Kishline, we will miss you for a few months.
No report in June for me. Thanks.
Thank you for all of your hard work.
Okay, Foundation Report.
Hours late.
I mean, I think that a lot of the last Foundation meeting, we, I was able to attend. We talked a lot about the, the scholarship night and just a couple of other things that are going on, so.
Still room in the golf outing. I've got to find myself a space. It's June tenth.
All right, Legislative Report.
Yeah, what's not to love? Um, so this is a very, very busy season. The session is supposed to end on the last day of May and it's usually a dash. And so now it's on. You know, you'll hear in the news, twenty-four hour sessions, all these kind of things. Usually the last thing that gets approved is the budget, because when the budget gets approved, there's actually a lot of legislation that gets put into the budget. What I try to do is put the links in to things that we're watching. Happy to answer any questions uh, for the board. We did have a board member question and, and response to the board member question. This is a really good question um, that came from Mrs. O'Halloran. And it was about, you know, things that, 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 that seem like, you know, most people would say, well, that, that makes quite a bit of sense. It's a um, it's a bill to require that all of our substitute teachers, we have sixty-four on our list, are trained in a similar manner, manner to our emergency procedures. Fire, lockdown, um, weather, as, as a classroom teacher here or students, right? Um, but well asked from um, Mrs. O'Halloran, how many folks do we have? How many were talking about? How would we train them? Uh, one way that we're thinking about that is, we actually, there's a video really well done by uh, Mr. Slager, our principals. That we actually use every year at the beginning of the year for our students and for our staff to remind them every, everything from lockdown, evacuation, tornado, uh, fire, walk through all of those. So we would require and then proof of you for all of our substitutes, past or, or current. That's one way that we would come into compliance, but it does give you an idea of new, new responsibilities that that legislation brings to, say, Dr. Greenan's office. And we talked about that last month. Anything I can answer on these? You know, we've got quite a, you know, we're already well into the night. And I'll keep you updated on which ones actually pass. Most of these are, are out of committee. And usually if they get out of committee in the Senate, they're, they're going to make it. Uh, they, they will become law. So, um, so that just kind of anticipates where, where we're at. The other one that I'll just highlight to you, that's going to be really interesting in the Lockport area district is, I believe that this bill to, to manifest seventh and eighth graders taking courses that will be accepted as high school courses, I, I believe that is going to pass. You know, that is because of some of these looming new graduation requirements helping to create space in student schedules. Right now, if you take math or you take English or you take science in uh, seventh and eighth grade, that is not accredited as your four years of English, your three years of science, your three years of math. Making that possible in seventh and eighth grade. There's real requirements there, but just, it changes dynamics quite a bit.
So my impression of that bill is there's not, there is impact on the high school, but the major impact will be on the theater.
It really will be because just like with, when our partnership with Joey Julian College, we have to have teachers who qualify. You have to be licensed to teach high school in order to um, have that credit. So it can't just be someone who has the middle school endorsement, for example. They have to be licensed to teach at the high school level, just like we have to have a master's in your content area to teach for JJC.
And then would the theater districts or the sender districts be required to follow the same curriculum that the high school follows?
That's all the, the, the kind of things that we have to negotiate out, right?
All right. I have a quick question about that also. Do you know, you kept mentioning math and science. Do you know if it's going to bleed into other areas like?
It would, those.
Language?
Yeah, that would just be a for example. I think people are very interested in world language because of the new two-year world language requirement. That's where a lot of people will start, right? But it, it's, it's broad. It's not confined to just one or two disciplines. Just those are examples.
Public comment follow-up. There was no public comment. Public comments this evening. There is nobody signed up for public comment. Communications, looks like. Um, it looks like there's one. And it is from Rachel Ventura, State Senator, Forty-third District. And it says, congratulations, looking forward to working with you, State Senator Rachel F. Ventura.
That should be for all of you newly elected folks, right?
Uh, we have one Freedom of Information request. That's in your board packet. All right, then we have our approval items and I have to catch up in my packet. Give me one moment. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May fifth, twenty twenty-five special board meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any questions? Roll call. O'Halloran?
Here.
Hayes?
Yes.
Garrison? Johnson? Lynn Johnson?
Let's go. Let's go.
Robyn Teneva?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, next we have the approval of board member expenses and expenditures. Do I have a motion to approve the May twenty twenty-five board member expenses and employee travel expenditures?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any questions? Roll call. Garrison?
Yes.
Robyn Teneva?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
All right. Next we have the Approval of the Treasures Report.
Yeah.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Nothing new as far as type of reports in the financial reports, but I would like to point out um, for the board, this is the um, Treasures Report for the month ended April thirtieth. Um, so the financial reports, if you um, take a look at those, um, we are at, this is the low point, right? So in May we'll collect ta- our first payments of the property, the next tax levy, the tax levy that the board approved December. Um, so this is the low cash point, right? Which um, you'll see overall in the operating funds is seven um, months cash on hand, which is right within what the board's goal is, is planning. Um, so we'll have to watch that just to make sure that we continue to stay within it um, as we plan to use fund balance, right? The other thing that you will not see in here, but you will see in uh, next months is our bonds closed today. So that was a uneventful close. I got a message saying that all wires went out. Everything closed lovely. So um, so you'll see those uh, funds coming in um, in May. Um, other than that, um, you'll also see at the end of this, some things coming up. Next month you'll see the um, amended budget for approval. Um, that, that document will be the document, that's the one document that all board members have to sign their vote. So just, you know, next month, remember that you have to sign that for me. And there, then you'll see right around the corner in July, tentative budget for next year. So um, it, usually in July, it's fairly fairly rough because there's a lot of information we don't know yet. There's still hiring happening, things like that, but um, but you will see what the starts of next year's budget looks like um, coming in July. Are there any questions about any of the other pieces? There's a lot in the Treasures Report and I know for some of you, it's the first time that you're um, going to be voting on it. Um, not necessarily seeing it, but voting on it. Um, are there any questions about what's included in here?
Stephanie, when I was looking through the financials, I just started to see where there was mention of the um, of the new fund, I think is what the.
Fund ninety?
Fund ninety.
Fire Prevention and Safety Fund, which is where we have to spend the life safety bonds, right? So um, the state of Illinois for all school districts has some prescribed accounting rules, right? And so one of them is which funds things have to be recorded in. And so when we issue bonds that are for the purpose of life safety, we have to put them in the Fire Prevention and Safety Fund. Um, so those, that, the revenue, the proceeds will go in there and you'll see these expenditures there. So um, you may or may not remember, months ago when the bonds um, were approved, when the parameters resolution was approved, one of the notes in there was for us to repay the district for funds that went out first, because in order for us to make all this happen this summer, we had to start paying some things, right? So that's where you'll see some expenditures already in April for Fund Ninety. Um, you will see one small payment. If you look at the revenue, there is one payment on April twenty-ninth that was our essentially a down payment by the, uh, by Mazero, who um, was our winning bidder for our bonds. Um, they call it a good faith uh, payment, but um, but it's essentially the down payment on those bonds, right? Like, that's their initial payment. So um, that revenue and those expenditures for the first couple of things that we started paying, which is all of DLA's work, as well as our, some of our construction manager work. You'll see all of that in that new fund that you're talking about.
Thanks.
I have a question. So the um, we got the, the bond and so we start paying interest on it now.
Yes, the bond, there's a, there's a interest schedule. So um, and it's all scheduled out based on when it our pay, first payments will be, our first interest payment actually will be July first, I believe. Um, and in this closing, there's already like part of the money for the first interest payment in there upfront. Kind of like um, if you were to buy um, an investment of a bond mid-session, right? Like, within the six-month period between it, there's interest you have to pay to pay the other people. You know what I mean? So there's.
Right.
We already have the first portion, part of it, we will with this closing. So you'll see that too. So like when we, when I record all of the revenue we got today, part of it'll go in Fund Thirty to pay that first bond interest payment and then the rest of it, the fifteen million will go in life safety.
Okay. And I'm just looking, I'm looking at one of the pages that was in there and it, so we have eight million that's going to the roof this summer. Is that correct?
Actually, our bond, our bids came in less than the estimated eight million, but yes.
Okay, okay.
And, and, and just to clarify, um, that estimate was for all of the work. Uh, roof, electric, um, and masonry. The, I'm, I'm going off memory, but we were in about two million, two, I thought, just from memory, so I apologize if I'm off. Uh, two point three initially was the Burgland estimate. One of the neat things is DLA checked uh, a construction method. We thought, initially thought we'd have to have steelworkers on that roof. Very expensive. Uh, we do not. And DLA came with, up with a method where we're only going to use roofers, so the cost of that came down significantly. But the original estimate of eight million dollars is for phase one of this summer and that's the total work. Um, you know, all three aspects of that. Masonry, electric, and roof are all kind of under that umbrella. And about roughly a million, uh, little bit over is contingency, soft fees, just having contingencies, which we're already talking about now, for exam, just to give you an example while we're here and cut me off if we're getting along on time. Um, Dr. Green wouldn't appreciate this. Our scaffolding company wanted to start scaffolding on May twenty-sixth and May twenty-seventh. So May twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, those four days, they would be scaffolding. It's metal scaffolding, a lot of pounding. We said we, we can't do that until um, you know, school is done. We can't have you making all that racket while kids are taking exams in schools in session. Uh, that provider said, well, if you're going to have people come and work from one to eight, then that's going to be an overtime charge. And at that point, we had to make a decision, do we want to go into our contingency funds, some of that additional funding beyond kind of the initial estimate? We want to say, you know what? We're going to reschedule the schedule, start on June second. We're not going to pay overtime. Maybe we're going to do overtime on something else, but Burgland felt as project managers, they can get into that. So just just kind of things that we deal with on the construction project.
So one of the things that you'll see every month in this um, Treasures Report is the Central Campus Summer Twenty Twenty-Five Roofing and Masonry Project Item. So historically, that item in this report has been to account for inter-fund transfers for other summer projects, but because it's all being accounted for in one fund, there's no inter-fund transfers. Um, but you'll still see um, kind of an accounting of those expenses. So you'll kind of see at the bottom. If you look at the bottom of it, it's showing, it's basically an accounting of the fifteen million. So you'll see the um, the fifteen million proceeds and then, you know, an estimate of an interest. So you'll see the, um, the fifteen million proceeds and then, you know, an estimate of an interest, and then all of the contracts that have already been approved. Um, so you can kind of see where we're at. So we would end up in theory with this estimate having approximately nine-point-three million dollars available for next summer, so.
I was just clarifying that we were paying interest on money that we took out-
Yep.
To, for next summer, just clarifying that.
Yep, okay.
And one of the, no pun intended, interesting things is, we'll invest that money. So as you pay interest, you're also earning interest in investment, because, but just like that Fund ninety, you, you can't invest that money, earn interest on it, and then use it for a different purpose. You have to use it for that Fund ninety work, so.
So, it, so ideally, that would go then towards our payments?
You can use it towards the interest, you can use it towards, um, the actual project itself, but it has to be related to the project, it can't just be extraneous to something else.
Good to know, thank you.
Um, and then Ms. Curry, you mentioned that in July, we're going to start looking at the new budget. Um, what recommendations would you have for the new Board members as they start looking at this for the first time and leading up to that meeting?
Um, that's a really good question. Um, there'll be a lot of information, um, to, like, consume, because if you look at the line items of our budget, there's like thousands, there's like a thousand-plus line items. Um, so to get, like, into every line item, say, of, you know, Dr. Johnson's budget, or, um, the math department budget, or a science department budget, I was just talking to the new science department chair this morning. Um, the, it, it gets a little bit, um, like, I can get bogged down in that even, right? Like, when you look at every line item, so when we really look at our budget, the biggest pieces of our budget are our salaries, our, um, benefits. Um, you know, the things that make a biggest impact, um, are probably where I would focus first, I guess. Um, and then, um, ask questions as, you know, to, through Dr. McBride, um, I'd be happy to meet with people. So that's the next piece, right? Um, I expect to have a August finance and facility meeting, which would be before we, um, approve the final budget for next year in September. So there's time there too, to dig in a little bit more, what the budget would look like for next year.
Right, and I would recommend for all Board members, a couple action steps. One is to, um, look at the, the five-year financial plan, really familiarize yourself with that. You know, very important, I think, you know, financial forecasting, very important for the Board. Two, I would recommend, and I recommend this for all Board members, um, certainly we can meet with two Board members at a time, but schedule some summertime with Stephanie and I, really to, to workshop it. And then three, I would recommend a conversation about some of the big levers, right? School construction, that's a big lever, how we, how we manage that. Fund balances, how are we using that, that's a really, really big lever. What's on the horizon that, that we're facing? For example, Mrs. Kishline was kind enough with some other leaders to join us. We're having conversations with staff about any kind of changes to the bell schedule, it's something that we're gonna bring to the Board, but it comes with a cost. If we offer an additional class to all of our students, which I would highly recommend, and we're drifting towards that recommendation, but that's, that's a large new class, cost. And then finally, talking with us about financial strategy, your current strategy right now is to debt service abatement, so that your debt has no new debt responsibility on the community. That's what you thought you were hearing from your surveys, that the community's for doing, you know, essential maintenance work, but can you leave my sort of tax bottom line alone? And you're in a strategy with that right now, but that comes with the cost of using fund balances. Really, debt service abatement is using a fund balance to pay your debt. You're taking on new debt, so that'll be a larger debt service abatement, right? So some of those major, big, big chunks, I think it's really important for Board members to get their eyes on those, because they have implications with long-term strategy. Summer's a really good time to, uh, sit down with Stephanie and I, and really kind of work through those things in twos or ones. So I'd, I'd really recommend all Board members make that time, it's very important.
Dr. McBride?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, uh, a potential topic for a board retreat? To get a kick it off?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I would defer to you as Board members, what you feel you need at your retreat. I, I would, in general, I would say it, 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 it takes so much in-depth work, that I-
To kick it off, to kick it off.
Oh, I, I don't know if I would do it as a kickoff, because it's, it's, it, you could do a whole day just on the budget, right? So I would have to know a little bit more about what you're thinking about Board, as Board members. I just always recommended Board members doing it, two, with me and Stephanie. One, the learning is deeper, I think, when you do it in that setting. Because I oftentimes find different Board members are, are interested in different, different aspects of this very large document. So we try to customize it and personalize it to what you're interested in knowing more about.
Dr. Shaw, the other thing I would say is, um, in our treasures report every month is kind of the high-level way I look at the expenditures, right? So the expenditure report is by the categories, the big cat, the big expense categories, right? Salaries, employee benefits, purchase services. And it kind of gives you an idea of like, here's about what we spend in each of these funds on these things and what it looks like. So making sure, like, you kind of understand that report, you know?
Alright, any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the April twenty twenty-five treasures report?
I can second that.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
Oh, Helen?
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Alright, so something new we added to our agenda is the Board President Report, so I know that we, um, and I don't use Comic Sans, I don't know why it ended up changing over to that font, anyway.
We sometimes never know, uh, with Board docs, I'm gonna be asked-
Sorry, that one's just-
It's a, it's a, it's a terrible word processor, so don't, don't, don't put yourself, uh, you know, on the pillar.
Alright, um, so I kind of made a purpose statement just as, as we start talking about how we're going to partner with our feeder or our sender districts. Um, I put in here for everybody to take a look at, um, and this is a working document I have on my drive. So I have the school district, I put in their next board meeting, um, one of them happens to be, I believe, tomorrow. Um, well, District, District ninety-two, Mr. Duster Hop, we'll see you. Um, and then if you click on those links, it links you directly to the rest of their board meeting schedules. So I, uh, was hoping to have kind of an open conversation, um, to talk about, like, who, who wants what district, kind of thing, so. And I'm happy to attend with anybody, um, and move forward with that.
Well, I, I'm already on the District ninety-one, um, foundation, okay? So I have to give a report there every month, so I can take District ninety-one.
Ninety-one, okay. I'm happy to do Fairmont, okay.
Taft is a great district.
I was just gonna say, I can do ninety-two or Taft, it doesn't-
Ninety-two or Taft, why don't we, have you, have you been to Taft before?
Only one time during the, um, central, you know, renovations talks with Dr. McBride was there presenting.
Alright, well, I'll put you down for Taft and then-
Okay, perfect.
Come see our show, Braggie's players, we're doing Frozen Junior. Hold on, what are the dates? I think it's May twenty-eighth and to June first.
Who's the technical director of that production?
Me.
So we can email you for the details?
Yes, please.
I can take either District ninety-two or thirty-three C. Okay, are you available tomorrow evening? Uh, what is tomorrow, excuse me, I'm not. If you're, if you're not, I can, I can hop in for you tomorrow, if you wanna take ninety-two for the-
I can do ninety-two.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for asking.
And then I will talk with Wendy, um, just to see what she would like to take, and then Luann, I'll talk with you on the side, does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay, alright. Um, so then below that, I know we talked about foundation meetings, just having a liaison to go to a few different, um, just meetings to represent the Board. I went to the last one, it happened to be the day after the last meeting, actually, I believe it was May sixth, not May fifth, I'm sorry. Um, and then the next one will be June seventeenth, so do I have a Board member that would be willing to go, it's at four P M. in this room on June-
It is not in this room.
Oh, it's not?
It is at a, uh, establishment, you might know, and this is actually a good opportunity, uh, to meet some of the Foundation Board members informally. It is taking place, Paul Ivenic, of Nick and Ivy is one of our, um, Foundation Board members, he's hosting sort of a year-end. We're meeting four P M. at Nick and Ivy, so don't all rush. But it's a good way to meet Foundation Board members in a more, uh, unstructured, informal way, I highly recommend it.
I'd be happy to go.
And I know that I won't be able to attend every meeting, but I would love to rotate in and-
Put my name down for Richel, especially since I'm a Nick of the world.
So Richland.
Richland, okay.
For sure.
Anyone else that would wanna rotate?
Yeah, for sure.
With the Foundation meetings, and really get to know- They all wanna come down.
Don't get the wrong impression here.
How we know.
I mean, I feel like that's fair share.
Um, I'll bring it up at every meeting and we can decide who's gonna go to the next one, so, alright. Perfect, um, and that's all I have for, for this report.
Okay, Superintendent Report, I'm gonna have my colleagues, um, Grace Gonzalez, Eric Slager, when ready, and, um, Jeanette Castillo, come on up, and as they come on up. Uh, just a couple of things that, that I'll add in here. Um, I do have, um, attached here, and I don't know if we're gonna have enough time, Facility Master Planning Council really took a look at our Innovate K twelve Spring Facilities, um, document. Uh, we'll be getting that to the Board, we'll be getting it in print, I think it's a really good document to take a look at, Finance and Facilities will be looking at it as well, very, very interesting. I would say you are on track with what the community has been saying last spring, this spring, and, and expects. Student Board Member applications are rolled up and wrapped up. Uh, just a reminder to the Board, we'll see you in here at six-thirty P M. on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, and Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, so that's six-thirty P M. both nights. You'll have panels of students, these guys have done it. Uh, good luck deciding, because once again, we're gonna bring you twelve candidates who are top-notch, and you will have a difficult time deciding. Just a reminder, the schedule, six-thirty P M. each night, we ju, we have to open like a regular board meeting, we gotta get ready. Seven o'clock, we'll have one panel of students, take a break. Seven forty-five, eight o'clock, second panel of students, that's night one, take a break. Night two, come back, six-thirty, so you can maybe talk about the candidates. Seven o'clock, your last panel of four. Roughly seven forty-five, eight o'clock, you get a chance to debrief and make your selection. And then usually what we do is we have all four of our student Board members come to the June meeting, and the four new Board members you appoint, they kind of come as well, right?
What was those dates?
Uh, May twenty-seventh, Luann, next Tuesday?
May.
May.
Okay.
And May twenty-eighth. And the reason why we do that, so I know that's a lot of work for you guys, but what the students have shared with us is a real benefit. We used to do this, that, the first time we did this was the end of July, and the beginning of August, not an ideal time. But also what the students shared with us was that knowing at the beginning of the summer, actually, these students could do some work with the new students, and they, they found that very, very, very beneficial. I would also say, gosh, wow, thank you, for anybody who participated in this. It goes without saying, you know, I'm so intrigued by titles like this, Seven Mindsets is a great organization and company, you know, transformative superintendent, but I don't think you can do any transforming unless you have people who are, you know, as creative as these folks, Board members who are interested. I cannot stress enough to you, like, tonight I thought was a big, big accomplishment for you as a Board, with Dr. Namuwa coming. Think about it for just a moment, you are the number-one school of twenty-six high schools in cer, in terms of dual credit. You said that you wanted to put your emphasis on college and career, A P. and dual credit, really for all students. You did it, right? And, and, uh, Mrs. Kishline is not wrong, it happens because we have teachers who are willing to teach dual credit, but that expansion is incredible, and it's one of the most real contributions you can make to families, because if you walk out of here with twelve to eighteen credits, those credits are accepted anywhere in any public university in Illinois, and just think, like, if Tammy's daughter, that saved her a whole year. That's a real financial savings for families at a top-notch institution, so congra, you know, I can't do that. I can't get a, a nice column like this unless there's really creative people around. So speaking of really creative people, I'm turning my report over, and you require me as part of my superintendent goals to do a communications report, and I've asked Jeanette and her team to do that right now, particularly just as a new Board, so that you're thinking about some of the Board policy that guides communications, you're thinking about what our P R. department does for us, who they are. I'm gonna hand out the paper copy, because I think sometimes it's nice to have the paper copy of the report, Jeanette.
Absolutely, thank you, so good evening, Wenonoch's Board. I am here joined by my team here, um, Eric, our videographer and webmaster, content manager and, uh, graphic designer in-house, and Grace Gonzalez, she fully supports the P R., um, department and foundation, so we are a small group of three, but we are mighty. Um, and myself, Jeanette Castillo, as your Director of P R. So, um, as you are receiving the copy now, and you've been previewing it over the weekend, um, I just wanted to go ahead and, and give you a, a run-through of the twenty-plus pages of report here, which I will say, it's, we do a lot throughout the school year. And, um, it's, it's quite, uh, a blessing to, and grateful to be able to share positive stories at our district, and being able to highlight just a couple in, in just this report. So if we can go to, um, page two, as, um, I mentioned introducing my team here. Fun fact about our team, we, ninety-five percent of our work, it is done in-house. So about only five percent, we outsource, and we outsource by working on direct mailers. Not that many school districts can say that, especially when we have someone like Eric Slager, who is, um, immaculate in videography and graphic designing, and Grace Gonzalez, fully supporting, you know, the P R. department and foundation, and that's with, um, with your support as well, with the Board. So we fully support, um, and cover two campuses, right? We're a high-functioning team, and, um, with nearly, as you know, almost four thousand students. So, um, we are united by one mission, and that's amplifying the student voice and, um, and staff and district recognition. And we'll go on to the next slider page, thank you. Something different that we did compared to other Board reports is what is super helpful and will be helpful now for the new Board, um, reminding and referencing the one voice, right? We not only, the P R. team supports the district, but also supports the Board as well, and really amplifying the resources and the tools that we have, um, to be able to support the Board. So with that being said, if you can see on page three, we, um, thought it was super important and critical that effect of communication and unifying and, um, that communication among the Board and the district. It's starting with the Superintendent, right? And starting with the flowchart. So if, if, you're not, if you're in a, at a store, or just at, um, in the community, and you get stopped by a staff member or just a community member, and what do I do as a Board member, right? It's leveraging one voice and being able to remember, thank you for, you know, thank you for taking the time to share your comment or concern, I will share this with the Superintendent and, um, with the Board President, and, um, we will get back to you. So it's really stopping, um, there and being able to share that with the Superintendent and the Board President, and coming up with this protocol, right? Where we can see this is all aligned by the Board Policy two colon eighty-one and two colon one forty, which all of that is available on our website, and that is available in Board docs. So, um, anything, if you have any issues as far as accessing, it should be available there. So with this flowchart, it's the outbound communications protocol. We're starting with the Superintendent and the Board President. It's really partnering with both, um, by unifying the district message, right? And then working with, with me, with P R., collaborating with the Superintendent and the Board President, and then anything- the board president, and then anything in regards to outbound communication, remembering that you're one voice. So, you know, now in times of social media, it's so easy to react and be a little bit more of, oh, I want to be able to share that, let's pause and just think, all of that reaction and behavior should be aligned with board policy, and it's really more avoiding the personal commentary. On page four, we will see that there, again, this is all aligned with the protocols as far as unifying the one voice, and it also includes the social media guidelines with, for the new board member. We did approve the social media guidelines in the March 17 board meeting, which that social media guidelines packet is being handed out and is also available on the website and board docs, but just sharing it and as a refresher as far as the do's and the don'ts, right? It always helps to know, you know, we fully support and being able to work as partners. We'll move on to page five. And page five is really a reference and background information as far as, you know, where, where our work comes in history as far in recognition with the National School Public Relations Association, and unifying and aligning our board goals and mission. So, for you all to know, and just a reference here once again, the background information, it's, you wrote this board goal as far as communication and you approved it, so we are here and we continue to be here to be able to carry that and helping the board and the district to carry out that goal. And as we know, communication is key leadership and an academic tool. So, going on to page six, this is really an overview of the communications goal statement, which you all helped in being able to write and approve, and we have all the resources and tools to be able to leverage that and expand. And on page six, I focused on strategic focus areas, so one will be relationships, and that really is strengthening the connections with all stakeholders. And with all stakeholders, that is students, family members, community members, business owners. And two, identity, right? Promoting a consistent and, you know, being able to leverage a sense of pride for the school district and transparency, and then also effectiveness, so that's the sharing, the timely manner of factual communication. It's sharing our story, not someone else's story, it's the district's story, across all platforms that we have, whether it's on social media, on the website, in our YouTube page, and efficiency in the reach. So it's really amplifying, maximizing the impact that we have as far as resources and being able to maximize our leverage to all stakeholders. Any questions for now as we continue?
And I might just, you know, one, kind of make it, you know, back up just a little bit with what Jeanette's sharing, is one of the important things is, like she said, oftentimes you might see something, you could see it on social media, you could see it in your travels in the district, or you might have something come to you. And really what we ask and board policy asks is if Dr. Shaw and I could have an opportunity to see something, you know, bring it to us so that we can be the agents who check with the rest of the board, check with PR, sometimes we're going to arm you with a statement, or we're going to make a video, or we as a board are going to feel that the best way to do this is, is social media, to use our platforms or to directly respond, or we think, you know, you, Candace Garrettson, you're the best person to speak to this, right? You know, really just using PR to kind of arm the entire board with, hey, here's, here's our message, right? So.
We will continue with the case studies. Like I mentioned earlier, I think it was a little challenging to re-, really be able to just minimize a couple of highlights and case studies, internal and external, because we, there's a lot, and that's, that's great, but that just also goes to show the many great things happening and buzzing here at District 205. So, a couple of highlights and efforts as far as communication for internal. In the beginning of the school year, we started with being able to reach out to our staff to, by proactively encouraging the staff to collaborate with us, with the PR team, and again, it's that sense of unification of universal communication and reminding others of the communication platforms and tools that we have. So, we decided with creating a flyer, and that's really to remind others, start with PR, don't end with PR, because once you start asking yourself, well, why don't I see that on the website? Well, I don't, you know, it's not highlighted on, on social media, or why wasn't this, well, did you perhaps share that with PR? And if the question is, oh, I didn't, well, there's the answer, right? So, as the year went on, previous years, we decided, I think the best way to be able to do that and leverage our communication and remind others is by starting the campaign and slogan of, just start with PR, don't end with PR, right? And later in the school year, so it's later in the fall, and partnering with building administrators with assistant principals and other administrators, is creating the building signage that you see behind Dr. McBride and around the buildings as far as emergency procedures, and also being able to create a incident communications flowchart, similarly to the one that we had for the board as far as outbound inbound communication. So, that really definitely leverages and creates a clear incident protocols and procedures, who, what should we do in case point scenario, who should we contact if not, then, then whom. I will continue on to slider page nine, if you may. And to continue on with the efforts of additionally streamlining email protocols, this is more internal, once again, this is by being able to manage emails outbound, going out to district-wide. Teachers receive so many emails, the amount of emails that they receive, whether it's Google Classroom or an email from a student, the one time I noticed, and I'm not the only one, right, a teacher had like at least 15,000 emails, so it's, how can you manage to work with all those emails? And how can we be able to, you know, help teachers like that and support them? And with that, we decided to be able to change some permissions by allowing only a couple of, say, administrators and other building administrators and building secretaries to be able to share those district-wide emails, and that way we minimize that amount of emails and their inboxes, hopefully there's been a change. But we figured, I, I think that's the best way, so we can be able to streamline the emails district-wide internally. And then, as you already got a copy of the social media guidelines, this is just part of the internal communications efforts that we decided to include, because once again, not a lot of school districts have a full-blown, laid-out social media guidelines. It might be just a paragraph or two, but we really took the time to do some research and obviously be able to present that to the board, and it was approved in, in March, and we hold pride with that, so thank you. And then going back to what Dr. McBride mentioned, as far as working with the district and the board members, with former board president Anne Lopez Caniva, it's really being able to elevate the student voice, but also being mindful of our multilingual families, right? And how, something that we did earlier on in the school year in January, we, we were able to work on our first Spanish-speaking video, and not by using AI-generated, it was all authentic, and that was, and even Dr. McBride said a few words in Spanish, but that was, you know, we thought it was super important to make two videos, one from the district, including myself, and one from the board, and creating and sharing that message to our Spanish-speaking families, again, authentic, and that's to cover, you know, such important topics as far as immigration, but also to remind our families, you know, this school district is a welcoming school district, and just reminding them where we stand, and being able to share that message, that it is from us and this is where we stand as far as the board. So it's a kind of inbound outbound communication and protocols that if it's a district message, it comes out through us with the help of the superintendent, as well with the board, it comes out through the board president. And you can see there the number of reviews, but I won't go into the nitty-gritty of that, but I just thought it was super important to, to be able to highlight that. And then we'll go into external communication efforts. So, within the school public relations, we also have partnered with the Will County Regional of Education and other school districts. So, this started earlier on this school year, and this is with other school districts by partnering with the Will County ROE to be able to develop a signed IGA that unifies, again, that universal common language for school safety, and that's in, within the region of Will County. So it's still in the process and still in the works, but we are proud to be able to get that started and collaborate with other school districts. And in March of this year, we hosted a meeting with the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, and I have to say, we received number of positive feedback as far as receiving valid parking from our SRO, we had Great Weather Day, our building staff here at East Campus was outstanding as far as being able to, for me to host that meeting with this regional chapter, and they were, they were just amazed as far as how great our facilities looks, but not only that, but that our staff welcomes, you know, outsourced, you know, other participants from other school districts, and the feeling that it feels welcoming and being able to be here at the district. So, we were able to host that meeting in March, and that was super successful, and we have here our student board members, so it's continuing to collaborate every month and being able to produce the monthly board meeting briefs, which we are super looking forward to the next one, so stay tuned for that, right? And from here on out, I will pass the baton over to Mr. Slager.
Hey, I just want to give a real brief kind of update on our website. As some of you may remember, at the end of 2022, we switched website providers from Blackboard to Aptigee, one of the perks of that was getting a phone app, you can see our most up-to-date mobile download numbers at the bottom here. And so since that time, since that transition over to Aptigee, we have built the website out to 172 pages, and in the spirit of collaboration, we have invited 13 non-PR users, so other staff members, to collaborate on pages that they have a stake in, and so those 13 users have a total of 65 pages that they can oversee and edit on their own. So that way we're kind of ensuring that everything on the website is as up-to-date and as current as it can be. So, some of these, these pages in the middle here, these are our top three most viewed pages in the last year, obviously the homepage, staff directory and district calendar, those are what I would consider like evergreen pages, they're always there, the content is always being looked at. Some of our, what I would call seasonal pages that have also garnered some views, Annual Update has 15,000 views already, that just opened recently, Welcome Back Days and Homecoming are up to 11,000 views just for the year, so I think that that showcases people's desire to find the information and the ease of its accessibility on the website. The graduation page, which we have just updated recently, is already up to 9,000 views, so people are clearly going to the website to find this information, and it's important to us to keep that as up-to-date as possible.
And the number will only keep growing once the live stream starts. That's where we get the most amount of visitors.
All right, Ms. Grace.
Okay, my turn. I'm Grace Gonzalez, Executive Secretary for Public Relations, and my role is supporting the Public Relations team. And part of that support is I create and design, well, I inherited a version of the Porter newsletter, and since then, it's grown from 10 pages to 22 pages, and part of that is that my eye is to, maybe, not that they were not included, but some other, their activities were maybe missed. It's fun creating that, I, we use in-house software, we use Canva and Flipping Book, so it's all done at my desktop, which is nice. The creation and the distribution is quarterly, so I, right now I'm currently working on this spring, so be ready for that, May 30th, that will come out, but the fall, we do summer, fall, winter and spring, and as I said, I'm working on spring, but it's fun featuring also our different activities, our different clubs, like when I first started on, I am a band parent, I, my, my children graduated from here, but I featured the marching band on there, and just seeing the elation and feedback that we received on that being featured and being able to distribute Porter community pride through these avenues. We do do a lot of posts, we have great rapport with our social medias, but it's, it's just an update again of what we have posted in CNN, and it's a little more in-depth, because I do reach out to the clubs directly or the activities directors of who are in charge to give quotes or updates in regards to something that might not be available when you do a quick social media post, unless you are part of that organization or activity or your students are, right? So this can help garner interest and show us and elevate what Lockport Township as a district has to offer.
Mrs. Gonzalez won't mention this, but I will mention that the newsletter, I mean, it is an award-winning newsletter, so with the help of Ms. Grace, she received an award, which in that picture, that's when she's receiving the award by Inspira. So, we are a, you know, small group, but we are mighty and we are a winning team, so, and again, that's just to echo the amazing, great things happening here at the district and having to give the credit to those that deserve it.
All right, I'm going to jump back in for our in-house videos, so on our YouTube channel this year, we put out 60 videos, all of those were produced in-house. I tried to include some thumbnails there, have a good selection of the different things we do, from student spotlights to event promotion to event recaps, we try to really cover as wide a range of things as we possibly can, just to showcase everything going on in the district on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. Of those 60 videos we produced this year, there was a total of 55,000 views across all of those, that's including live streams, for a total of 5.2,000 hours watched on our channel, so pretty significant. Our most viewed video of this year, you can see at the bottom there, was the safety update with Dr. McBride, got almost 6,000 views, and our most viewed live stream was graduation with almost 8,000 views, which every year continues to be our, our most watched live stream, no offense to these board meetings. So, that's, that's kind of the YouTube channel, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the website or the YouTube channel that I can answer while we're here at this portion.
No question, just commentary, I remember back when we were transitioning from Blackboard to this new, and just the undertaking that that was, so I just wanted to say, I appreciate your efforts, it's way more easy to navigate now.
Appreciate that.
You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, well, we can continue taking a breeze here at the report. But as you can see, you know, the next part of the report is focusing on the direct mailers. So this year, we disseminated two direct mailers, one in the first semester and the second just last month. And that's part of the 5% portion that we outsource with a company that we've researched and found that has done, it's like their bread and butter, working for school districts. So it's great to be able to work and collaborate with this company, which they're pretty local, to be able to assist with the printing and the mailing of the, the direct mailers. So you can see there, the first one was in October, focused on the community forums. And the second one was just last month on the surveying for East Campus. I don't know if there's any questions there.
I just had a quick question because I don't remember all the questions. Is there a copy of all the questions that were in the QR code for the direct mailers?
I believe the link for the survey, it is still available. It's just a matter of them being able to collect that data so that way it can be imported. But it's, the questions are still available. Yep. And then we did, we did receive the full report. So we'll be able to ask for just more of the list of the questions. We can add it there as well.
Okay, perfect.
And really going into the rest of the report, it's focusing on the campaigns and partnering with the LTHS 205 Foundation, which this year we worked with closely with Angela Adolf and the rest of the foundation board. But really, it's been a remarkable year working with the foundation and partnering with them as they continue to elevate the, you know, the student and the staff achievements and everything that is happening here at the district. So always looking forward to working with the foundation and other community volunteers when it comes time to promote and partner for the Young Hearts for Life event, senior awards, and so many other things happening with the foundation. So even though they are separate, but they are still connected here together with the foundation and the district. Bless you. And I'll go towards the end of the report here. It's really to recap any of the social media overviews that we've had throughout the year. As you can see, just in counting, we've had over 3,000 social media posts. And that's just in, in this school year. I will have to say that Dr. JJ's video on Instagram, it was a hit. And that was just on Instagram. We've had over 21,000 views.
This was the prom video?
Yes, that was the prom video. So if you have not watched, it is still available and it is there.
Can you click on that?
Is this feed live?
But really, we'll recap towards as far as the media coverage highlights. As you can see, you know, it's, it's great to be able to partner with board members, with community and staff and students to be able to share the amazing, great things happening at the district. And all of the social media and local media highlights and mentions, it is available on our website as well.
Questions. This is very comprehensive, but it gives you an idea of the reach, the development, you know, all the different platforms that we're trying to, you know, way beyond board docs, you know. What you're seeing actually in an event like tonight, really almost, not almost, every single thing you're seeing as board members for the agenda is exactly what the public sees. You know, the only time that we don't share something with the public is if you have closed session, right? Even board docs, you know, can be diligent, is, is a form of PR, right? So we can be transparent. We can be public. People can access whatever we're looking at, you're looking at. You know, no mystery here. Questions for the team, you know, this is just really to brief you, give you an idea of how they're representing the district on your behalf. I think they do an outstanding job. I think we're very, very, very lucky. You know, in a crisis, they're a great team to have. Communications this day, these days and crisis management, absolutely critical to managing a crisis. All the way to having fun and making sure that students see themselves reflected in all the things that we produce, right? That's what it's all about is when you see yourself, everybody, no matter what, even this day and age, if they know they're on TV, they go crazy, right? You know, all you have to do is go to a sporting event in the jumbotron, you're on it. People go nuts. Why? Because people want to see themselves. They want to see that what they're doing counts as seen. And obviously, we want to do that. Who here has taken a picture of your children recently? Or a niece or a nephew or someone who graduated? You do that, right? Why? Well, because when you document it, it becomes real. And you know, that's what these guys are doing for us.
I just want to say, I think the job that you guys are doing is really great. And I think, as Dr. McBride already mentioned, we are very lucky to have a PR team. And going to Triple I and IASBO, you hear about a lot of districts that wish they had a PR team or they don't have anything cohesive or, you know, protecting the brand. So I think you guys do a great job and thank you very much. The one thing that I noticed this year is that you've done a lot of media outreach. So Dr. McBride and some of our students have gotten in the TV news and of course, the, the print media. But do you have a strategy for growing that or continuing that on?
I can say that with previously working in TV news, that definitely is the plus and the benefit of being able to have and go back to my rolodex of, you know, contacts. But you know, as school district news and student achievements and staff achievements occur, then I start to continue to leverage and add more contacts. And it's also like, who else, who else do you know? But just being out, as they say, out on the street, it's, oh, I ran into so-and-so. Oh, is, is that person still working there? Oh, but no, they're not. But here you go. Here's the contact. So it's just a matter of networking.
Right. And we're very blessed, you know, almost every time we have a crew come, Jeanette knows someone. So that's a great asset. She's being, you know, very humble. But also what I've found is when you say yes, right? You know, these are news agencies. They're trying constantly to produce content. They're contacting schools. And a lot of school districts say no. But when you begin to say yes, then those producers at CBS, Fox News, ABC, you know, tend to pick up the phone and say, let's call Lockport, right? Because they know that they're going to get a cooperative group of people. They're going to get individuals like Angela Huntington that'll get on camera, right? And, and that makes their life easy and it's an easier phone call, right? Then it puts our profile out. I just recently was around a whole group of superintendents who just said to me, to your point, Mrs. Garrettson, you guys are on the news all the time, right? And, and to their credit, we're on the, on the news for good things, right? You know, which also helps the district. If there's something unfortunate that happens, you have a public presence that's positive, right?
Just want to say thank you because I found girls wrestling off the Student Splash page. So I can guarantee you it works and it gets, it just gets the word out for so many different clubs. And I'm just really appreciative of it because it got me into my favorite sport, so.
And I also, just reading through this report, really showed the number of ways that you reach not only community but also the students in a comprehensive way, no matter what platform you're on or maybe you're, you know, just trying to find a community that, and those are all in there too. So thank you for all the hard work that you do.
Yes, I just want to echo the notes of gratitude. I have to say, for the high value of numbers and productivity and efficiency that was showed in this report, for being a team of three, all that you're so busy in doing, I have never seen you once, none of you complain or seem tired. All of you seem so grateful for the work that you get to do. That's just such a testament to your intention, your heart posture and the work. And I love seeing your smiling faces once a month on Wednesday mornings. And I'll miss that.
You might see a few social media posts delayed, but always with pride to be able to share.
Just wanted to say thank you to, to all three of you. You've done an excellent job over the years. And I mean, you really created us, you know, from, from bottom all the way to the top. You've done very well, especially with the branding part and then also with Dr. McBride. But I was at Guardian Angel before this meeting. I was at a Guardian Angel community meeting. And former educator from Lewis University and from Troy Township. He's a former superintendent, Larry Weirs, I'm sure you know him. Yes, of course. But he did say, he, he made very comments. He said, every time I turn on TV, there you are. And he said, but he spoke very eloquently. He says, Lockport has done very well, he said. And, and he really, you know, being an educator, he really sees the success of students and the videos and everything that's been posted. So thank you.
Thank you.
That is my superintendent report.
Okay, information reports. We have the curriculum report.
And we have Dr. Huntington here, working with Dr. Shaw for this agenda. We knew we would have a long night because we have all these porters doing great things. So the report that you have from District Management Group, I'm going to let Dr. Huntington describe what it is. But we thought we would, we'd really dig into it next month. So we're just going to do a little cursory description of it, dig into it, give you a month to really consume it and take a look at it. Dr. Huntington.
In 2019, Dr. McBride came to me and said, hey, would you consider doing this big program review with District Management Group? And I was very excited to say yes. Little did I know that the world was going to shut down and we were going to do this program evaluation remotely and dig through all of the work. What happened from that was we presented a five-year plan called the District Improvement Plan. And that memo that is in the board packet that is very detailed and dense is for your viewing and reading pleasure. And I'm happy to be digging into that next month.
It's effectively been our strategic plan. And I think when you look in that, next month, we really pull it apart. I think what you'll see is many of the things that we've done over the past five years. It's a, it's a neat memo of, you know, promises made, promises kept. Dr. Huntington kind of collected it all from all of us who worked on it and just the things that we set out. So you're going to recognize many, many of the things. I think it's important that you, that we dig into that next month because we're going to springboard into things in the next school year like a bell schedule, right? That we hope supports students, you know, and this was ultimately a strategic plan to support students. Thanks, Dr. Huntington.
The principal attendance and discipline reports, they are there.
Green. Turn them on. All right, we're green. First of all, I wanted to officially say welcome and congratulations to our new board members. We're very excited to have you on here. And also to our student board members. I know you have one more session to go, but you guys have been phenomenal this year. You have been passionate advocates for the student body. You have been so wonderfully articulate in talking about all of the matters that are brought to the school board. You are well-read. You come with your research done. But it has been an absolute pleasure to watch you guys grow from your freshman year and then on the, you know, advisory council here to board members. It has been an absolute pleasure. And you guys are going to do amazing things and we can't wait to see what the future brings for you. You know, you saw in the board report, all of the phenomenal things that are taking place here with our athletics and our activities, as we saw tonight, and all of the amazing kids that we honor. The end of the school year, you know, is, is upon us and it is the craziest time for educators everywhere. But it is probably the most rewarding and exciting time for us. We really are proud to celebrate our students. Couple of things, I know Michaeline mentioned, strikeout cancer. What a phenomenal event for us to bring our, our school and our community together. Here, we celebrate two students, two former students of ours that lost their lives to cancer. And just the outpouring of support. And that day is really about giving back to the community and giving back to our kids. You know, Mia was one of the, the winners of the CC Foundation Scholarship. But it really is a testament to the community that we have here in Lockport.
Yeah, I wanted just to echo what Dr. Green said. We are so thankful for you board members and also our student board members especially. We're going to really miss working with you. We are so very proud. Every time you're here, you're advocating for your peers. You're representing us in a way that we hope all of our students do. And so, you know, again, we know we have one more meeting with you, but we were really talking earlier just about how proud we are of you and just to see all the accomplishments. It's like the end of the year. We have graduation next week. You know, and we're just excited for all the things that we know you're going to do because you've done some great things for, for your peers and for our school. Some other things that we wanted to highlight was just scholarship night. I know people talked about it before, but it really was a wonderful night. I have never seen so many kids get so much money and parents be so excited. There were so many tears. You know, it went kind of long. We did a stand-up for like 30 seconds. I thought Dr. McBride might kill me, but he didn't. Thank you.
We're going to lose them.
Hey, but I didn't lose them. The people, they came right back to me and they sat down and we kept it moving. And so it really was a wonderful event, just a spotlight. All of the just unique, different students we have and the experiences that they've had that we've been able to honor. Again, you know, we were together at the strikeout cancer event for the CC2 this weekend. Just the parents, the families, hearing stories, being able to honor loved ones. You know, having a parent who passed from cancer, I really just thought it was so beautiful just to see so many people recognizing and honoring and naming their family members out there. And then also, we had our big show Saturday night. And if you weren't able to attend, it was awesome. It was all Disney. And I love Disney. I was able to bring my oldest child with me, who is a huge Disney fan. And our kids just sang their hearts out. And I think that's one of the things that we just wanted to really highlight is just at every event, like tonight, you know, being able to honor the things that our kids have done throughout the year. We're just proud. Like this is the time of year where you can really take stock and look back and say, our kids have done amazing things all year. And every time I get to talk to my friends about like how cool our kids are, they're just like, I wish we had kids like that.
So we're looking forward to seeing your sunset.
Yes.
And a lot of fun with our friends and then honoring all of you at graduation.
Absolutely.
So, and thank you to everyone for a great year. It really has been.
Yes.
You know, it's been a great year and so much to be proud of. And thank you for all of your support in making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one thing, I'll, you know, not for this evening, but also just to always remind board members, in the back, just something I always ask you to get your eyes on is the discipline report. You know, they do painstaking job to put that into the report. And it's just, it's really worth board member review. We look at it all the time. So, great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the overnight field trip. There are four of them. We don't vote on those, but they are there for board consumption. The maintenance report.
Mr. Thompson has composed again a masterpiece. You know, he's only got one more maintenance report left, you know, then Brian Omer will take place. But you can see lots going on, most of it related to Central in this particular report. And then just some of the things that we're doing, you know, mulching, repair, auto scrubber at Central. But really, most of this is updating you on what's been going on with our construction meetings. We're in the staging phase of getting ready over at, at Central. Wednesday morning, eight, seven thirty, pardon me. We are having every single contractor who is going to work on Central this summer come together to, to meet each other, know each other, begin lines of communication so there isn't bumping into each other. And Burgland organizes that as our construction manager.
Okay. Up next, we have our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items two through 12?
There was a board member question from Mrs. O'Halloran about Kami. And we did correct some things on that. I hope you saw that, you know, in your questions. Kami is a PDF reader. It's used by students. It's used by staff. We've had it for quite a few years. It's very familiar in the education space. So just, you know, I hope, you know, responding, we've had it for five years, doing a little bit of research. We usually pay for that per student, which is a typical license that you'll see licensing strategy with software providing companies, so.
Thank you for that.
You bet. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for your catch.
All right. Seeing no further questions, roll call.
Hayes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
All right. Up next, action considerations, the approval of two EL Summer Enrichment Program teachers.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes. Okay, the approval of the DJ Entertainment Agreements with Dance Party. Do you have a motion to approve the DJ contract?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I had emailed Dr. McBride and I spoke to Veronica over the weekend a little bit about it. I guess my questions are also just kind of like a statement. I've had four kids go through the school as, I mean, I know most of you guys know that. And I have spoken in public meetings before about prom, the cost of prom, the cost of the dances. So obviously, new to the board, when I saw the cost of the DJ, I was surprised. And I do understand that it's not just songs on iPod being played. I understand all of that. I know there's a light show. I had actually asked as well if there were multiple, did we look into multiple companies? I know that obviously, I'm not the student activities director, but I did look and I did find another company based in Chicago and they do do that stuff. And, I mean, I have their price sheet right here. They're $700 or they're 700 guest amount, which I know that would be like TWRP or home, or I think there's only 700 at prom is what somebody had said. And their prices were dramatically like a third of the cost. And I am concerned because I understand that this is something that we elect to do and then the students pay for it. But the students, you know, there are students, some of them have jobs, some of them don't. Some of them have to cover all these costs on their own. So I just, I do take pause in voting in such a high, I know it's a saving from the previous, but I do worry that there maybe was not enough looked into in the terms of, you know, how many providers could we have looked at? So.
And I was actually, I was surprised by the pricing when I initially saw it. But once you look at the numbers and you divide it by the number of students, it is covered by the student ticket sales. And it looks like in most cases, there's money left over, I'm sure, for decorations and refreshments and things like that. And I think that when you look or listen to the testimonies of both of you, sorry, my microphone, I think that it really makes a big difference when you have someone who's coming in and putting on a show and people are attentive. And I think that the students enjoy that and they want to have that. And I think that it really is paid for through the ticket sales.
Well, like for prom, I know for prom, if it's 135 for the ticket, we're spending almost 100,000. It's 99 something for prom. And then the prom was 6100. It doesn't, they don't quite, it doesn't quite cover it. I don't think it quite covers it.
And maybe I looked at more of the other two.
That's okay. And that's fine. I just, it's a concern of mine. You know, as every board member knows, I came here for years as a public speaker for the public. I've had several people come to me and say, I mean, that they didn't know if the value of homecoming was worth it or prom was worth it. And so I just, I thought it would be best to be true to myself and to bring it up.
Yeah, and I definitely appreciate your perspective, Tammy. I had similar questions when I started on the board as well. I questioned the contract with Boom and I saw that the price and it was sticker shock. But then after sitting down, I came to a dance, I saw the setup. Our new assistant superintendent was nice enough to walk me around. But in just seeing and having worked at school districts, maybe like that were mentioned, where students would show up and then they would leave and then they're left with their own devices. And then when you, then having worked in a school district or a school building where the number of, the volume of students was higher, that DJ and that MC there for the safety aspect is just absolutely pivotal. Just not only because of, you know, just the coordination of the dance, but if there is an emergent situation, they need to be able to take the reins on that and direct students where they need to go. Also, just speaking towards prom, having also worked in a district where, you know, we would go to a local venue, a lot of venues around our area can't hold the volume of students that we have, which is why we do need to go and find, you know, areas like downtown and things like that. So I mean, I've experienced all of that as a professional and that's just something else to take into consideration as we're talking about these things.
Do have a quick question. How much is the price of a homecoming ticket now? And then would it go down at all from the new DJ?
Yeah, ask Mrs. Kroy just for all of our ticket costs.
Homecoming and TWRP currently are 25 pre-sale, 30 at the door. And I am not sure if they will go down or not. It depends on costs of other things. But Mr. Rossford usually does a full cost along with the sponsors. What are you looking for, you know, to have at that event? And what are we looking at for cost, you know? And then can we cover that kind of thing? So I can't answer whether it'll go down because I haven't done that full analysis, but it's currently 25 pre-sale for 30 at the door.
Okay, thank you.
And our prom ticket, the board approved in, yeah, in January with our fees, and that's 135.
And just speaking to the price of the prom ticket, obviously it is a lot larger of a price as opposed to the homecoming or the TWRP ticket. And going to prom this past year, I paid for my own prom ticket personally. I paid for two prom tickets personally. I am not someone that works crazy hours. I'm a busy girl and so I am not able to work a ton. But I would say doing that experience as I'm a senior and entering into adulthood, having that skin in the game of paying for my own experience. My parents had to teach me before prom, like, you gotta save some money for this. And just teaching that and kind of learning very basic budgeting with something that is very low risk was an incredibly fruitful experience. And so I would say while the ticket price is high, I think it's something that our students can handle. I think that the number of students that attend prom is a testament to that. Our numbers have not decreased, I feel at all, as ticket prices have gone up in any sort of way. And for me personally, I would spend that amount of money 100 times over. It was, I felt very well worth spent. I felt the board and Museum of Science and Industry and our activities team were good stewards of that money and made it a very memorable night.
As a note, the largest portion of the cost of the prom is actually MSI. The Museum of Science and Industry, who is the board then.
I think it's worth it just because they feed you and you get to go wander around a museum. Like if you just go to the museum, it costs money. So, and then to get food along with it, like, yeah, the food is good. But just like, everything that goes into it, I think it's well worth it. I've gone twice. I went my junior year and my senior year. And I will say, actually, I enjoyed my junior year more for whatever reason. I don't know if it was like the group of people I was with or something. But I do like that it's open for juniors and seniors. And just the fact that like, it's, personally, I paid for it twice. I think it's well worth it.
And I think that in comparison to just, I mean, thinking of my own prom experience, we're providing students an experience. We're not providing them just the dance. So they're able to see the things at MSI. I know ours specifically was at the Shedd Aquarium this year and it was unbelievable. So it just is engaging and it allows students to have a really memorable experience.
And just, you know, one thing just to chime in on the conversation, I thought Mia brought up something that's really important, a couple of points. You know, one, our participation in an era where, where, I'll be honest with you, I don't know a school around that does a spring dance anymore, like TWRP. Nobody does it. It's just plummeted. You know, participation, our numbers have just, at least in my tenure, haven't dropped at all. We even had high numbers during COVID where we had to do some pretty unusual things, go in the parking lot, have the social distancing prom and the field house, you know. Our numbers were high and they were sustained. So that tells me that students are bought in and they feel that they're getting, you know, a good experience. Second thing I think is the diversity of people, you know, where that ticket goes. You go to the Museum of Science and Industry, you have a lot of options. You can dance like JJ, you can eat, you can sit, you can visit the exhibits, but it gives a lot of kids a lot of entry points. Or, you know, Dr. Huntington was a real leader in having kind of a sensory down room in the main gym, right? Just, you don't want to be in the large production room. You've got an alternative in the main gym. So having these different kind of entry points creates a diversity that allows everybody to come to the place. But, you know, I'm not familiar with that company, but I will say this, Mrs. Hayes, I'm familiar with almost all of them. And the number one reason why I don't do any of this for any other reason than safety. And I'm very serious about this. Large, you want to have 3,000 people in the field house. And this board has experience with an event gone wrong. And let me tell you, if you don't have someone queuing, telling students what to do, and also they're listening to that voice, 3,000 people, that is a lot of people to manage. And you, as a board, always want to be able to say that you had every single social, you know, safety protocol in place. So what you're doing is you're co-opting youth culture for safety, to create a better, safer environment. And I just think that's worth, you know, really, the only two companies, the reason why I know this so much is my 15, 14 years as a high school principal, I had to put that at a very, we saw behavior change at dances. We saw sexualized behavior. We saw things happening in the dark middle that a lot of us that were high school principals weren't proud of. We saw mob activity. We saw the advent of weapons potentially being in audiences. Things dramatically changed in my tenure. And so I think that the large-scale production like Boom and party DJs provide, as I said, when the DJ says, hands in the air, Dr. McBride says, yes, keep them in the air as long as possible because they're not someplace else, right? And I really mean that, but just think about what can go wrong in a large audience. You've got to have a highly amplified voice to direct kids and you've got to have somebody who's repeatedly directing them so that there isn't, you know, a situation. So I really, really mean that from the bottom of my heart. And this is something in my career I've just researched because I just feel a responsibility. We're going to bring kids into spaces that can be tight and they're large. We've got to do everything to make sure that we're just being safe. And I agree with you, Dr. Shaw, come, I would come to homecoming, you know, each board member. It really is interesting to see and see how we're doing that. It's a way that kids can enjoy it, but we can also provide safety. It's my number one mission with these large events.
What company was being used when the thing gone wrong happened?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think Boom was a 10-year contract or something. You guys have it for 10 years?
They were there, yeah.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Announcements.
Policy consideration, your last month without any policy. So see you next month for Press 118. Really quickly, you know, great stuff going on. May 20th is not the triathlon because we're expecting rain. Friday is the triathlon. So I'm excited. I'm on a team with a group of students and then I'll compete solo the next period. Dr. JJ, I believe, is competing. I don't know who else maybe out here, but it's a blast. Senior Sunset, like I think Dr. Green said, fun event. May 29th, a staff luncheon. You're all invited. People love seeing you. 12:45 is the luncheon in the East Campus Cafeteria. 2 o'clock is the award ceremony. It's just a feel-good moment where we really say to our staff how much we appreciate them. May 31st, you know, commencement, and we always, just to let you know, it's 4:00 PM, it's outdoors. But just like a superintendent, Dr. JJ gets to make the call about on Friday. We always decide on Friday, is it inside? Is it outside? So it's going to be spectacular no matter what. That's it.
All right.
Thanks for your stamina tonight.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right. The meeting is adjourned.